Finanz meeting to order. Today is September 24th, it's at 6 o'clock. And here today, we have Andy Copacki, Paul Benjamin, Sherdul Parmar, Peter Matusco, myself, Amy Fiden. And we also, it is joint with the Select Board, so if they'd like to call in.
So I would like to call the Select Board meeting to order of September 24th, 2025. On the Select Board here this evening, we have Amy Parsons, Molly Keegan, Jane Evansmith, David Phil, and myself, Randy Isner.
Okay, so as far as the finance meeting, if we could do the approval of the minutes to start with?
Do we have to do the board's plate about recording?
No, this is not a hybrid.
So it's not a hybrid, just as an occasional mention? Right, sorry.
So I sent around the meeting when I heard the agenda the first time and we thought we were doing Monday, but I had sent around the agenda with the minutes. And so if I could get a motion to approve the minutes on 8/7, I think they, oh, you redid 8/6, 8/7, 8/18, 8/20, 8/21, and 93.
Did you look?
Yeah.
I think you set a new record for the number of pages sent down.
I'll make a motion.
Second?
Motion by Paul, second by Sherdul. Okay, all in favor? Aye. All right, we also got something from Hadley Media asking for a funds transfer of $900. Actually, I think Paul was on that email request, and so wasn't Sherdul. I did notice, sorry, you weren't on that email when I just double-checked it, and I think Andy wasn't on that email, so I grabbed a sheet. I thought.
Thank you, sir.
So Alex, since this is regarding your funds transfer request, did you want to go over your request?
Yep, pretty much simply, we just needed, because of the uptick in town meeting and the more tech we need for town meeting, it can be a lot easier if we have a couple of extra hands for our production crew, just in case I need to go fix something, someone else can come and take control of the, of our switchboard, and they can, they can direct the other two operators. So that's pretty much it, it's just extra hands at town meeting.
Okay, so, and so you're looking to, what, pay a stipend to someone?
Yeah, for maybe contractors.
Independent contractors?
Yes.
Because you're looking for someone special, it's not someone that you can just get an extra hand at Town Hall or someone, how did you do it for the town meeting that we just had? Did you, did someone at Town Hall just help out, or did you have an independent contractor?
Yeah, so the Select Board covered it in their budget, so we, I hurried around through our Western Mass group.
Alex, you're not broadcasting.
Yes, I am.
Is it on YouTube?
It's on YouTube because 99 people are watching it. Eleven people.
Oh, it's not a hybrid meeting, though. I think people are confused about the hybrid, they're trying to go the normal way. No, it's fine, I'm sorry, Alex, go ahead.
Okay, anyways, so, where was that? Yep, so, and then the Select Board covered it, I went out and found two people who'd be, who could operate a camera for us, and that's pretty much it. Yeah, because, because town meeting was the way it was, I didn't, I wanted people to know what they're doing.
Okay.
Instead of training on the fly.
So, and what, you have a company, you have a place that you can get people from?
Yeah, pretty much, I look for other public access people.
Okay.
Are you still going to be needing those same people when it comes to, I guess we'd call it the normal town meetings where there is 125 to 175 people, where this was the extreme, where there was 612 to the town meeting, where you're still going to be needing those people when it's in the cafeteria as to the gymnasium?
That's something, that's going to depend on whether or not, how, the next town meeting will be in the gymnasium, I believe the next one will be in gymnasium.
Yes, it will.
And to add that, to that, the gymnasium is a very hard one to sound in, so it'd be good to have an extra hand, I literally gave my iPad to Nick at that town meeting because there's a lot going on, I can do the switchboard and the, and the sound at all at once.
Madam Chair? You need $900 per town meeting?
No, 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 this is for...
Total budget.
To all of our town meetings, the potential graduation.
Okay, thank you.
So it says the next two town meetings and graduation?
Yes.
How many people does this represent?
Two people, so $150 per person.
It could be four or five hours.
Well, as, I would share the same concern that Peter mentioned earlier, which is, obviously we've got a big man coming through, and he, you know, took extraordinary measures, both with the clerk's office, and for this past town meeting, good thing we did. I would expect Fall Town Meeting to have somewhat similar, but, you know, the majority of our town meetings were met with less than 200 people, let's just say, you know, in one smaller, more confined space, so this is something that would be as needed?
Yeah, I would say as needed, if it's going to be in the cafeteria for like the regular town meeting, and we might not need the two, it also depends on, I'm also, it depends on how heated the, heated topics will be too, I think. So I think it's a case, it'd be a case by case situation for, for all that.
And this would probably help, let's say you're not available for any reason, we're, we'll be able to kind of use that to go and find somebody?
We could, yeah, yeah.
So this is looking to take the 900...
Reserves.
Other reserves, out of the Hadley Media reserves?
Yes.
Do we know what the balance in the Hadley Media reserves is?
No, not top my head.
I know, you have $900 in there, so I just...
Wasn't it like 75 or 80?
I know there's not a ton, though.
So another, another thing to point out too, we got an extra $7,000 and then some change from Charter Spectrum because they did an audit and they, they fell short of their audit, so they gave us what, what we're supposed to have, and we have an employee who's not taking on all of his hours right now, because he's had, say, a temporary full-time job at the moment, so there, there is savings right now, so it's not like 900 is going to kill us.
No. Anybody else have questions? Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the 900 transfer from the reserves.
Second?
Okay, motion by Paul, second by Sherdul. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, everyone.
All right, great. The next on our agenda is, let's see, they're just talking about the general fund operating budget for '26, '27, '27 in regards to the outcome. And we can just, what would we like to start? I mean, I know that...
I think what I'm going to say, though, will also take in some of the other agenda items, because it's all buried together.
It is kind of buried together.
Okay, sharing feedback and such. You know, I've, I've been actively supporting this, and obviously it did not go the way I wanted to see it go at the town meeting. I also attended a meeting that was hosted up at the Sugar Shack, that was of people who were against it, and there was a lot of feedback there, most of it was accusations of overspending, mismanagement, finding people know about the medical bills, you know, the insurance going as high as it did. I think what I was struck with most at that and the other feedback I've gotten, people voted against it, including, I think, people on our board, is that there is no, doesn't seem to be a plan from people opposing this, as to how we are going to come up and fill this $2.2.25 million hole. It seems to be just let the chips fall where they are. We have a fire department that's going to be heavily affected by this because of the way we set up our budget right now, we have healthcare costs to cover, we have free cash to reclaim to put us on an even keel so that we can survive the 27-year budget. And I guess what I'd like to hear is, you know, what, where are the plans? Some people have, I mean, Peter has mentioned to me things he thinks with, you know, buildings, you've said that you think we could maybe move the library over to somebody else, the, maybe the Friends to take over the library costs. Amy, I think you've talked about even this building going to Friends, so that we divest ourselves of our buildings to other organizations, and I guess what I'd like to understand is how does that work? And what are the other plans? Because that's not, those things might help us if, if it's a tenable, you know, a plan that works, but we have to pay these buildings off, we can't just, they're on bond, so we can't just do that. My question is, what is the plan?
Amy, how would something like that work? Have you thought, have you put thought into how that would work? I'd say we would go and, and, and what are the numbers? Have you, have you figured out what those numbers are?
As far as a plan goes with a building, it was a talk, at one point, the library, let's use, for example, that was owned by the trustees, it was only recently within, since I've been on the finance, that we actually moved it into the hands of the, and that was the other library, I'm talking about Goodwin Library, that was always the trustees.
But that was paid off?
That was paid off.
There was no mortgage on it, I mean, essentially we have a bond, it's a mortgage.
The bond, I don't...
And I believe the operation was still paid by the town?
Right.
Right, so, so if you were to go and dispose of this asset, the town paid millions of dollars for it, how would you do it? How would you make the numbers work? Have you put thought into that?
Well, like I said, it was owned by the...
It was, it was an idea that you presented, but what thought is behind that idea?
That, that thought was that many times that when we go in, out to bid on different...
I understand that, what analysis did you perform to determine if it was a viable solution?
That's not necessarily the plan for every, I, I don't know where you're getting at.
Well, if you're going to...
That, that was something I talked about last year.
You're going to come out with an idea, you have to, you have to have thought put into it and actually, you know, figure out based on...
That was something that I talked about last year, that wasn't something that I just brought up as...
But, but, but it was something, an idea that you came up, well, you know, Paul...
No, I never brought that up, so I don't know where you got the library, with the library, and I never brought that up.
Well, you know, Paul and I actually figured out what it would take to go and dispose of these assets, because that's what we've been told, that that was an idea that you guys had come up with. And actually, you know, when you go and look at the numbers and figure out that to get rid of the senior center, you have a $405,000 annual bond payment that you have to cover, you have $250,000 of, of operational expenses, so that, assuming that you have about 1,000 seniors, we're going to start charging them, like a gym membership, $700 a year to go and use a senior center. That would just to break even, that doesn't even cover replacement cost, or maintenance, or anything else. And that's what, that's what we actually did then, analysis, to see if, how feasible this is, not just that, the bond payment, you can't even go and transfer because there's rules against that. And so you have a $6 million asset that you're going to have to, somebody's going to have to go and cover that. We did this exercise for a reason, it's because people come up with ideas about all of these things of getting rid of certain assets, but nobody really goes and spends the time to really analyze how to go and get rid of these assets.
Well, an idea just came up, and I didn't hear that you talked about the idea, you never asked about, we, it was only one...
It's a crazy idea, it doesn't make any sense, because, because of all, all of these things that... What was that?
What ideas do you have? I mean, they were just talking about...
I'm supporting the override, I don't...
This wasn't anything to do with the override?
Well, yes it is, because many...
I didn't mention this with override.
Because many people have talked about, you know, selling this and selling that, and moving this and moving that, and you know what? All of this talk is meaningless unless somebody does an analysis, and so far, I haven't seen anything from the three of you on how we're going to go and plug these holes. What I hear is a lot of rhetoric, and what I hear is that you're telling town people during the annual town meeting that all of these exec, all of these decisions about hiring are done through executive session, which is an outright fabrication. We have full control of, this finance committee has full control on hiring of people.
Do you know when the last time that the last 22 people were hired within the past seven years, do you know what departments, those names were there?
Yes, I do, actually, I did, I actually, no, no, let me answer that, I actually, I actually did that analysis.
Because you want an idea, this is one of the things, you want things that I want to know, is, okay, how about we start with a hiring freeze, we start with pay raises are done, how about we outsourcing departments, maybe Board of Health, maybe assessors, because we have a consultant that we're hiring somebody...
Again, all of these ideas are worthless unless you've done analysis of where, how it would work, and you know what? I did, I did look into it, and I did talk to different department heads to determine what it would cost to contract some of these things out.
Okay?
Okay, and I did an analysis on those 19 FTEs that everybody keeps on talking about. Here are the FTEs, 12 people are in public safety, this, this override doesn't pass, we are defunding public safety in this town. That is what it's gone, what it's getting to, defunding. That will go and save that many, $1,500,000 in salaries and benefits. We, we're going to have to incur a $251,000 unemployment cost. The net savings are around $800,000. Of course, we're going to lose a second ambulance, we're going to have, we're going to have increased overtime, low call force turnout, I spoke with the chief, and he told me that the call force turnout has, has declined over the years, not increased. So even if there is a fire, there's no guarantee that we're going to have enough staff, hours to, to go and fit, to go and do, go to those, these calls. We have a more reliance on surrounding communities, a mutual aid, and that could increase, because if it gets excessive, they're going to go and start charging us, just like what we have, happened with the ambulance. Loss of revenue opportunities, we had, we have a chance because of, this is going to take three people from dispatch, and we had a chance, and have a chance, because it's ongoing conversations with other towns...
You're making this all about essentials, what about those not essentials? This is what you're doing, you're making this all about...
No, 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 let, let me be very clear, during, during that, during that town meeting, it was very clearly pointed out by Andy about the FTE escalation in this town, and the hiring and the...
I said that too.
And you said that too, so, so I did that analysis, I actually spent my time to understand who these people are, and you know what? One of those people is sitting right there, but you don't understand that, and that is the problem with this town, and this is what your guys are talking about, because you have done no homework, you have no analytical ability, and you have not asked the people of this town, how are we going to go and solve this? And, and you have not worked with them. I have spent hours on this with them, and you have demonized them, you have made them the enemy of, of the townspeople. These are human beings, and the human cost of this, and what your guys are trying to do, is tremendous, I've seen people break down in front of you, I've seen that multiple times, but you don't see that.
And I've got people that are telling me that what it's going to cost for their taxes going up, and their property taxes, what about those people? What about those people in town?
And we have made provisions through the collection department to identify those people, Sue is already, even during that meeting, all, she told us, there was people who are voting yes, and she knew they couldn't even afford it, and she knew that, that they were on that list that she's going to go and take care of. We have provisions for this. You guys talk like your subject men are experts, but you guys haven't done the homework, and the town people need to hear this, because I'm tired of the lies and the rhetoric that you're, you're saying, to say that this Select Board, people like David Phil are part of this secret service that they're hiring in secret. You've been on the Finance Committee for 10 years, all of these increases that you have talked about are under your stewardship. You're telling me all of a sudden that this is new? No. I, you know what, I spent hours on Hadley Media watching videos of you in Finance Committee meetings, because I was wondering, what is the difference? What changed? Because the Amy that I saw in those meetings was very articulate, very understanding, and spent the time to do her homework, but I haven't seen that Amy. Because this is not the Amy that I saw in those videos, that's what, that's for sure. So you are getting influenced by people that are, that have a different agenda, you know that. Yeah, well, these are, these are not things that I saw in that video, I'm sorry, but you, you did a good job at one time as, as a part of this committee, but that is not demonstrated today, that's for sure.
Because she might have a different point of view of doing things now you're telling her about she's not the person that she was.
No, she spent the time, you'd be saying that. Because I saw the videos, because I spent the time to do my homework and saw how she did, worked, and spent the time with, with David Nixon and going through the budgets and doing all the things that need to be done as a finance director, as, as a person of a finance committee, and we don't do that anymore. We wait for budgets to come to us, she was building them. To go and say that, that, and her comment to say that we don't, we just, we just go and let somebody else do the, do the hiring, that is a complete fabrication. Every single time we meet with department heads, we ask, is this, are there any new hires? Well, we have all been in that room.
And have you asked, being part of those departments, have you asked, can the town afford these employees? Like Brian West said at the town meeting, it's okay to say a hard no if the town can...
We are not hiring any new people this year, we didn't hire any new people, there were open positions that were, that might have been filled, that doesn't mean that those, those people were budgeted. We have, we're not...
The town as a whole is in debt, then we're not budgeted.
Okay, that is also false, the town is not in debt, the town...
We're asking for an override, that to me is telling me that we're in debt.
No, that is operational, there's two different things, okay? What is, when people talk about the town doesn't have money, we have almost $2 million in stabilization, the town is not bankrupt, people keep on talking about the town is bankrupt, the town is not bankrupt.
But we're not using that, which is the wise thing to do, that's what people have talked about today.
And we made decisions to go and use, use stabilization to fund the ambulance when we should have used, when we should have used override, it should have been part of the operating budget, we're not doing anything different than we were last year, or the year before, nothing has changed in the operation of this town, of the operation of the fire department, operation of police, no, nothing, DPW, all of these things, nothing has changed. Why do, why do people keep on thinking that something happened between '24 and '25? Nothing has happened, it's exactly the same, the pressure, the financial pressures that we have have been imposed on us by other people, not by us. We have, look at, look at the health insurance, look at how it's, look at, you're telling me that we should have predicted that it would go up by hundreds of thousands of dollars when the increases from year to year in some years have been zero? You think that's our fault? That's the people's, that's the people's fault, the Select Board's fault, that they could predict that it's going up from, from 1.4 to what it is, $2.3 million?
Joe Coverford was here at the, at the Hadley Senior Center the other day for a meet and greet, and she said they didn't even know, she didn't find out until when we found out that this system was collapsing.
And 72 other municipalities are in the same boat as we are, they're having the same exact discussions, this wasn't self-imposed.
That's why Anthony's got a problem, I think they're in debt for a million, you know what they're doing? They're laying people off, they're making those cuts other way.
That's fine, we, we can lay all of these people off, vote on it right now, vote on it, make a motion.
What we need to do is...
No, make a motion, you have the Select Board here, you have everybody watching, make a motion.
There needs to be a list of things that...
Andy talked about FTE, Andy, make a motion to, to go back to 2009 FTE levels, go ahead, make a motion, I dare you.
We need to go about and look at a list.
Again, talk, 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 you didn't spend the time to put this together, did you?
No, I didn't.
No, and did you even think, when you go and make a list and present it to, to 600 people in Town Hall, in, in the town meeting, I should say, and to say that, does this, what is this?
The people made that decision.
No, it did not, we, we chose, you chose to present information without background, without context.
And if there was a five yes, you think they still would have went for it?
Those three people...
Is that how dumb you think the taxpayers are, that if all five boards, both boards, if we said yes, do you think they would have fallen for that? Is that how dumb you think that this town is?
I'm not saying anybody's dumb.
But you're blaming the three of us because we said no.
I'm saying you went and spoke, and you misled the people in that, in that room about the real situation of this town, and I'm tired of it, I'm tired of, you know what? There is things that this town needs to improve in, but the leadership and the hard work of our employees is not one of those things, there are some people that definitely need to change, and the, and the operations and the little petty things that everybody keeps on bringing up amount to nothing. People keep on telling me about, why does the, the fire department show up at every single, you know, accident? What do you think that adds up to? In wear and tear and in diesel cost? It doesn't, those people are already hired, those people are already there, there's no extra, there's no extra personnel cost, what do you think that costs in tires, in diesel fuel? Like, what do you think that incremental cost is? It sure doesn't help get us to $2.2 million. Like, put things in context here, people, you're, you're talking about things, people were complaining that we spent money on all these studies, most of those studies were paid by grants. We, this town, these people, just like Alex said, he goes and looks for money, Mike looks for money, Chief Spankable looks for money, he, he's done so much for this town in terms of upgrading our fiber optic and, and creating opportunities for us, but we want to demonize him and his leadership, when he's the one that has to go and, and in the middle of the night, when there's not enough people, he's the one that has to go and, and take care of a call when, when there's a call out there. This is, this is the guy that you don't go and treat like crap, this is the guy you celebrate. But no, this town, we, we want to go and act like he's the bad guy.
We weren't the ones that actually said that he was the bad guy.
No, no, you...
He was the, he was the only department that said that, he was the only person that, that did not have a balanced budget, and it came to this board saying, this is what we need to do to cut first.
And how...
I didn't say that, this board said this first.
But we agreed for almost three years, Amy voted for at least three or four warrants to fund that through stabilization, I questioned that for my first time on the, on the Finance Committee, but you know what? Shame on me for not questioning it harder, but you know what? Now, I will question everything that, that goes, goes through.
I've been with the board for a limited year, and I was at the, at the town meeting that Andy and I went to at a community finance committee with all other towns, and the first question that we had asked after talking to months, and, does an ambulance make money? And they said no, and we asked that in one question and found that out in less than two hours.
And...
And it took three years to figure that out?
I agree with that, because nobody performed the financial analysis or to work with it, work with the chief on how to go and, and see, make this work. That's, that was the problem, because he went and came up with an idea, we used a model that was similar to, to, similar to our community, but you know what? It doesn't always translate, but we went through it and we agreed to do this. We went and, and put our name and signed our names onto the checks of those people to train those people to go forward with this, and you know what? Sometimes in business, it doesn't always work out, but we're going to reneg, and now we're going to lose all of those people, all of this technology, all of this equipment... all of this technology, all of this equipment?
And lose a full-time fire department.
It's only been four years since we've had a full-time fire department.
Do you know how much the property in our town is worth? Take a wild stat.
What is the assessed value? What is the assessed value of Hadley?
I have no idea.
What do you think it is?
I have no idea.
$1.3 billion.
Okay.
Billion. With a B.
Okay.
And you can't, and 1 billion of that is the residence. It's not the, it's not the business.
Okay.
The actual market value I calculated for all.
I know, my assessment value keeps on going up.
Yeah, and you're telling me that you can't sell your house for more than what you, what the assessed value is?
Probably I could.
Yeah, everybody here could.
Okay, probably could. What's your point?
The point is, is that we have $2 billion of value in this town. Him and him are responsible for that. Every day, he, they're responsible in ensuring the preservation and the protection of all of those assets on a daily basis. And we're going to go and cut their budgets. Does that make any sense? That we don't have a full-time fire department when we have $2 billion of liabilities, of assets that we have?
That just shows you the excessive spending that we've had and been doing. Now, who's saying that we have to use essential people? Why not go to the non-essential first?
Do you know who said it? It's because of those, you did the FTE analysis and that's what you said, that all of this hiring was unnecessary. So you, that's what you, that's what was presented during the town meeting.
Most, the largest group of hiring in the FTE since 2019 is this department and a couple people over there.
Yeah, no, this.
It's almost all.
And now with this override, we're going to not only cut these people because as you can see, there's still a $1.1 million hole.
I'm saying non-essential.
It doesn't matter.
It does, it does.
Yes, it does, because you're going to have to cut more than what, what these people are. This is just the half of what you need to get to.
See, here's the other thing. In business, you pay into unemployment. You pay a federal number at the end of, mine was only once a year. And then you pay state every month based on a percentage, based on your, how many people have been putting in claims. That's not how it works for the town. We pay what, two-thirds?
We pay 35 weeks. We pay a certain percentage of their income. The fact is, is that the short-term, short-term financial cash crunch is not proportional to getting rid of them today. And not just that. Okay, we've been operating for the last three months with a full-time fire department. And now the budget only covered, that's 50% of the fire department budget because we don't have ambulance in there. So that means for the rest of the year, you only have half the budget to go and, and you're going to miss a quarter, basically a quarter of the year, you're not going to be able to fund the fire department. Because you've already used up half of their budget in three months. Because you have a full-time fire department. So you tell me, you guys are the, you guys went up there and you spoke to the town and told them that this is all crazy and this is all, tell me where I have, where I have made a mistake in my numbers.
So you're saying the three of us brainwash 600 people? That's what you're saying?
They, no, but no, you know what, Peter? You're, as much as, as much as I don't agree with you, your voice means something. That's my point. You sit on this board, people listen to you. People listen to Andy. Andy said that he doesn't think anybody would listen to him. I told them people do listen to him. People listen to Amy.
Well, if you did listen to me, you notice that when I actually did speak about this, I didn't say that the whole override wasn't worthy. I said that an override was needed, just not this particular one because I felt that we were asking a lot of the town and not offering any, any sacrifice.
Andy, it doesn't, even if you go and reduce the override by 10%, the fact that the second warrant, which was $300,000, that didn't even pass.
Didn't even get discussed.
Didn't even get discussed.
I was the only one on the board.
Because, because people have been misled to think that it was, it's overspending. It's over this. We're going and doing all these things. The fact is, is that we haven't changed anything about the operation from year to year. Nothing has changed.
What I actually heard about the second article was that they wanted it focused on buildings. They didn't want it involved in capital. And that's kind of actually where, you know, I came down on that as well. When you start putting in other areas of expenditures, it's like, I don't want to support that if it's going to go into buying a piece of DPW equipment or another cruiser or fire truck. That's what I heard from you.
And you know what, Andy? I totally agree with that. And we didn't do a good job of presenting it.
We didn't have a chance. I tell you, by the time we got to speak, I got about a minute.
No, you were, you were the least amount and I, and I fully understand that. But I'm just, I'm just really upset because people are misconstruing. You have somebody, you have somebody who sits on the Capital Planning Commission, Committee. Who's?
Chair.
Chair. Chair of the, the Capital Planning Chair. Who is saying that we are, that these people, the select board and the finance committee and everybody else were overspending. But I just, I looked up all the warrants from the last three or four years, from up until 2002. 2002, there was a $1.8 million warrant that he, he went and approved. Every single capital item that is on every single warrant goes through the capital commission. And that increased all of our operations. And now he's telling us that it's something else? It's something nefarious going on in town hall that's causing these increases? When he has, he has agreed to millions and millions of dollars combined between the last three years, between all of those items, you're talking about probably close to $6 million of items that he's agreed, that he's put his name on to go and spend. And now we have a spending problem that he's saying that it's not his fault?
Who is this person?
I have a problem with that. And that's why I'm here today because I'm fed up. I really am fed up. And, and I'm really upset because as a business owner, as a boss, as a we need to go and treat our employees better than we have been treating. Because I see the damage that it's done. Multiple, multiple employees, unsolicited, they are concerned about their jobs. These are real human beings. And you guys, you use them as numbers. And it is, and you bring up all of these little petty things. But there's a human cost to all of this. We're already losing people because they don't feel, they don't feel secure in their positions. People that we have invested time and money into. These are not people that are, that are just like off the street and, and you know, they're contractors that you hire laborers. These are people professionals. We have spent hundreds of thousands of dollars in some cases for firemen and even policemen and dispatch to go and train them to go and do their jobs. And we're losing them. To think that this is, this is what we've come down to is crazy. As a business person, I'm, I'm just outraged. Because I'm not going to lose these people if I have to take a short. And I did it. Actually, I did during COVID, I had zero business. And I had, and my key employees asked me, lay us off. And I told them no. Because I'm going to need you when this, when all of this is over, I'm going to need you. And I laid, and my whole family didn't take a paycheck for almost a year. PPP funds, all of that stuff, none of that ever came to my, came to me. I paid it to my employees because I know I needed them. But this town doesn't, doesn't see it that way. You would have laid them all off, sent them home.
Okay, Shardo. David, you have something?
Yeah, I know this is, I should come to more finance committees. You guys are much more exciting.
Oh, no, this isn't.
Admit it, Amy. We're always going to.
So just, this is just for me, not the select board. But we're kind of getting down to the wire here on running out of money. And I'm willing to bet that most people have made up their minds at this point how they're going to vote come election day. So, you know, if we could, if you could, talk about what are we going to do if the override fails on the 29th? You know, it's basically starting from scratch. So we may be looking at, you know, if we were going to attempt another override or a different override or the same override, that would be October 23rd at the earliest. So correct me if I'm wrong, but the money runs out. Okay, all right. Chief, when does your budget run out for the fire department, I guess?
I have to, excuse me, I have to run your numbers now that I lost my deputy because I, again, I'm missing three people now. So, and it all depends on overtime costs and.
So I guess my concern is we could be, if we're going to continue on this path to an override, we need to kind of figure out where we can have some cost savings in the meantime, what we would ask for in a future override, if anything, what changes, layoffs, et cetera, we are going to make. Because we're running out of time here to make a decision on any of that. And so, you know, I've heard a lot of comments from people since the town meeting about waste and things we could do better. And absolutely, there's always things that we could do better. But a lot of the, a lot of the things that were brought to me is like, oh yeah, we could save 50 bucks a month or 500 bucks a month here and there, which is great. And they're not invalid points. They're things that should be looked at for the long term. But that's like after we cross the bridge of what are we going to do in the next month when the money runs out? Because I'm willing to bet it's just, on what I'm seeing, that it's going to fail at the election. So, you know, basically we're out of time. So I mean, can we, maybe you guys discuss a little bit or what are your thoughts? Because as much as some people support it, some people don't support it. At the end of the day, it doesn't matter what we support or don't support here. It's what the voters decide.
I think we have a couple things we have to do. One, we have to get through 26 is one hurdle. And then the next hurdle was 27. That's a whole nother hurdle. So we started, we have, we had somewhat of a balanced budget with the two, one being the fire was not completed. And some of the healthcare wasn't done yet. So those are our two. We have to figure out how to get by that if it fails. Number two is 27, we'll have to figure out a whole nother thing. We're going to have to talk some more and figure out if there's another, you know, are we going to try another one, maybe a different dollar amount or something like that? But we're, we're going to have to have some serious discussions on what we're going to do. If we do the, if, we need to get through to figure out what we're going to do just for this year. And then after that, especially I'm assuming we're going to need to get an override of some sort. We're going to need something. But you know, if it fails, what we will have to do is we're going to go to the taxpayers and we're going to say, we do need this and give them another thing. This is what we're doing differently. This is what we're going to do. We're going to have to do something to show what we've done for them. You know, what are we doing? The thing is, on a lot of it, what happens is we're putting, we're going back to the tax.
One of those items that we have to do differently. You're saying this, you've said this multiple times. I keep on hearing this.
Well, why are you interrupting me? I want you to speak.
Well, why am I interrupting? Because I'm tired of this. We're going to need to do this. What are the, you, by this time, we have less than a month. We're talking.
Shardo, if you want to talk and we want to go over numbers, we would be happy to do this. But the rant and saying, oh, I have this here, just throw numbers at you. You know, it's, what do you want us to say to that?
What I'm saying, what homework, where are you deriving this? You've come to a conclusion. You have to have data to go and come to that conclusion. I came to a conclusion that we're in a big, big mess, even if we lay off all of these people.
We've been in a big mess since, you know, we've, our budget, ever since I've been on finance, has always been upside down. We used to, when I first started, use anticipated free cash. We've always used free cash. We tried to get back out of using free cash. We started to get in a better situation, but we've been doing it for a long time now. Okay? And we, there's even some policies out here on the, on the select board policies of what we are going to try to do. Okay, so we need to, we need to come up with some ideas and some things on what we can do.
This is not a free cash issue. This is, this is a high expense imposed on us issue. Like, we, we are not, this isn't like we've used free cash and this is all of a sudden biting us in the butt. This is that we've got this huge cost increase that we have to absorb somehow. And second issue is that we agreed to do this, do this ambulance. And we agreed to go forward with it and we need to now put it towards the budget. Those are the crux, that's the crux of this, of the issue. The free cash issue is something we, I agree, we can probably solve over time. It doesn't have to get solved now.
When we voted, both joint committee on the ambulance, on ALS versus, what are we going to do with the ambulance? You and you, and you voted against having any ambulance, second call. Amy, you and I were the only ones who wanted to save the basic life support, second call ambulance. So we were split, split there. But you wanted to do that. I think the whole board decided to go, I think it was unanimous, to go with just the VLS. No? Who voted? You went for ALS. So five, five for. And then here we are with an override to make that happen. And you vote against it. And speak against it. I mean, the problem I have is to then say, okay, what you just said a minute ago, we're going to have a real problem now we have to get through. And then in a year, we're going to have to come back to them for an override. The whole reason we're trying to do this override at the level we're doing it now is so we don't have to do an override probably for the next 10 years. We're trying to refill the free cash coffers, which we've, we had to use all of it this year. Just to get to this half point.
And everybody, people need to understand that what free cash is, is excess money that we have left at the end of the year. I just want to make sure, a lot of people understand, you know, we use this word free cash. Free cash is a surplus. That's all, that's plain and simple. And we've used it in a way that's probably not the best practice. But that is not going, that is not the main issue here. The main issue is that we did, we did a compensation study, which when I looked at some of those videos, you actually were endorsing it.
Compensation study?
Yes.
Yes?
Yeah, yeah. And so this is a study that you endorse. And now we have to go and pay people what they, what they deserve. Again, under your, your approval.
Shardo, I.
No, no, I.
Listen. Of course we want to make people get fair pay. I'm not, there's nothing wrong with that. And of course we asked for a compensation study. We've been asking for it for a long time. It wasn't until recently, we even saw the compensation study. Like, it was, it wasn't that long ago.
I agree.
And Mike gave us a copy of one, which we never had any input on. Or, I mean, all I do is we got a compensation study. There was, there was one prior to. There was another one made by another company.
Yep.
Which we never even did see. So yes, I wanted to give the people that were not unioned to have good pay so that they didn't have to feel like they had to form a union. Because we wanted to treat them fairly.
And you know what? You were ahead of the curve.
But it didn't happen that way.
I, I don't, and that's why, and that's, and I'm going to tell you, Amy, I looked at those videos and it was more adoration of you than what I see today. That's what, that's why, that's why I, that's what I have an issue with. Is because you, everything that this override covers is things that you have already approved, you have already agreed to. And for the 10 years that you've been on the finance committee, you have, you have endorsed everything that this, this override covers. Whether it's the ambulance and the fire department, whether it's the compensation study and also the not to use the free cash. And that's what I don't understand. And I'm sorry I ranted. I'm sorry I yelled. I'm just really upset that that you're the person, these are, all of the things that are in this override is things that you have talked over 10 years. And we've gotten to this point and we're going to fix, we're going to do everything that you wanted done. And now you're, now you've pushed against it. It doesn't make sense to me. It doesn't make sense to me. That's my problem.
I think the analysis like this is, is great. I wish that for some of the projects earlier on, we had it initially, particularly when we referred to, you know, the ambulance, we went on some preliminary information. I'm sure if we had had a thorough in-depth study upfront and had talked to other communities, et cetera, we would have had more information to make better decisions. And we know that spending that out of, out of, you know, the part of the budget that we, we did, certainly exacerbated this problem. Obviously, we've got some unforeseen expenses that we have to deal with. The compensation study is something that's really just kicked in recently, so we do have a lot of pressures on us. At the same time, people see that there's a lot of growth, and we're asking for a huge jump, and I think that, you know, there, there should be some middle ground here somewhere. And I'm not necessarily saying right down the middle, but there, there should be a place where we can work together with good analysis and good data, and work for the town. Again, I happen to agree that the town, a lot of people came in with their minds made up, and their minds were even more cemented an hour and a half into the, into the presentation. I don't think that, you know...
They didn't want to hear from the finance committee. They, they made that clear.
Yeah.
They, they already had their mind made up.
I understand, but we fed into that. People fed into, people fed, fed them what they wanted to hear, and that's, that's what I have a problem with. And they fed them misinformation, in my opinion.
So, we know what the plan is if an override were to pass, right? We basically, we tighten things up, but we continue operating, we can still fund the fire department, we can still face the disaster issue, right? So, but what we haven't really discussed on select board or finance that I know of is what happens if regardless of anybody's personal feelings in the room, voters say no? And they say no, not only to this override, but the next override request. What do we do then? Because it doesn't matter how you feel or anybody else in the room feels, at the end of the day, if they say no, we got to figure out what we're going to do, and what changes we're going to make, because it doesn't matter what we think here, it matters on town meeting floor and at the ballot box. And I don't think we've, and I know you've been working on this with me and whatnot, and I don't know if there's, we're ready to share, but, you know, if this fails, the twenty-ninth, and then we throw out another number for town meeting for the twenty-third, and that fails as well?
How many have thrown another ballot?
Well, either way, I'm just saying, if it fails at town meeting floor, it's probably going to fail at another ballot, you know, more, more people go out for the ballot, but it's, so we got to have, we got to have a plan, instead of just, I'm either for it or I'm against it. There has to be some compromise, and we have to figure out our path forward, because we know the path forward if it passes, we don't know the path forward if it doesn't.
Based on, based on the analysis that Shardu did, and again, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, this is, this is, the only reason that these folks are on here is because these are the ones that were identified as being the new, the newly created position since the last FTE report was done. You, you can't let all these people off. You will decimate public safety in a way that you will never recover from, so I just want to make that clear. But I guess the point, to David's point, that I'm going to try to get to is, if the override fails now, and then you even make some adjustments and try again, and the override fails again, and basically, we're told by the public, we're not giving you an override. These folks, because of the fact that they are in the longer standing unions than anyone else, likely have better benefits, better salaries, and things like that, so to Peter's point, if you were to get away from the essential employee idea of things, and you lay off non-essential employees, this is twenty people, and again, this gets you maybe halfway to the deficit that you need to close. So, if you went for non-essential folks instead, the salaries are less.
Number of people...
Benefits are less, and the number of people skyrockets. If you leave the school off to the side, I mean, this is twenty people, we have a hundred and some odd outside of the school, a hundred and fourteen.
Yeah.
You're probably talking more in the area of forty to fifty people if this is twenty, and again, these are the higher paid individuals, longer standing unions, that's half your workforce.
You can't even, you can't even get rid of some of the people in DPW. You're contracted to keep them. And if we go to a contract level, the contract, I talk with Scott today, you get rid of some of those people, you're still going to have to have people run them, and those are contractors at a hundred dollars an hour, which is twice what we're, which is twice what we're paying them today.
So, so, to Amy's point, I think she's correct in where she was going with this, is that I don't know that nothing is an option. The timing of this is, is tight. I think you, you, I don't, I just don't believe that you can lay your way off to resolving this problem. So, you, you're going to need, you're going to need an override, whether it's compromise, as Andy had mentioned, and making some of those reductions, and then asking for a different number, a lower number, maybe, I know he doesn't like this idea, but completely removing the capital part out of it. You know, I'm, I'm running a lot of those numbers right now to, to see if there is a, a more palatable option. But again, you know, this is, I don't know if anybody else is scared by this, but this is terrifying to me.
And that's, sorry, Jake, you can...
I just have an informational question. Is it possible with unions to simply say to people, you're gone?
Yes, you can lay, you, every union has layoff clauses built into it.
Okay.
So, their layoffs are possible, it's just a matter of, it's a matter of working out how and who. We can identify positions that, you know, positions of efficiency that we think we can, we can safely remove, more safely remove, I guess is a word I could use, you know, we have an assistant, but somebody else could still pick up the extra load, so to speak, we can identify those types of positions and do things like that. But again, now you're getting down into admins and things like that, where some of them are part-time, some of them are full-time, but don't make a fraction of what these folks make. So, you're talking about more and more people, and the net is the concern. The net is the concern, because, you know, you have, I, I'm, I've kind of coined, I don't know if I've coined it, but you have a certain amount of what I'm calling layoff power. So, you can't just say, this person makes X amount of dollars, that's what we're going to be saving, because that's not accurate. You have to pay unemployment costs. None of this includes, you know, because of the fact that everyone, almost everyone in this town is now in a union, you are, we're going to have to negotiate severance packages and things like that with our municipal unions specifically, because of the fact that everyone does a different job. Seniority applies. So, we can select a position and say, we're going to eliminate this position and lay this person off. That person, if they're senior, can choose to bump someone else, and they get laid off instead. So, there's all of that that is going to have to be worked out. We have to bring a labor attorney in, discuss all of these things, which we pay for, you know, all of these costs just, they kind of, it's a domino. And so, I think to David's point, we need an answer. We need, we need some concrete thought as to, or at least a statement that says, if this fails this time on Monday, what is the next step? I mean, we can take it a step at a time, just like if you're playing in a sporting event, right? One play at a time. I don't care, but I just feel like we need, we need to know the next step.
I just wanted to say two things. Okay, so, the first thing I wanted to say was, when we did the compensation study and we did everyone's increases, it was only like a hundred, was it a hundred and ninety thousand?
Two-fifty.
Was it?
Two-hundred and fifty.
Two-fifty?
Something like that.
Okay. So, it was a hundred and ninety, but there was a couple of them. Okay. So, it's two-hundred and fifty thousand. But the other thing that, I mean, I've talked to a few people, and I said that we didn't want, and I think maybe we could go back to the idea of having multiple, like separating things out for the override, but I, when I was explaining it to people, I said, you know, some, if we have five different articles, you know, like I might be good with ABD, you're good with CDE, you know, Amy's good with AB and F, and then it's like, then nothing passes and everything fails. So, I don't know if there's a way to maybe try it again with multiple articles to see, because I will say it was, you know, I think for a lot of people, it was just a massive sticker shock for like this single number, and, but when I was explaining it, I said, you know, that's why we did it that way, instead of having like, you know, five different articles that could all fail. So, I don't know if we want to try that.
Maybe.
Yes.
So, Mike made an interesting comment, that the townspeople will not give us an override, meaning that we are wholly responsible for the situation we're in. And I believe, after listening to what Shardu has said, and I've thought about it a lot, we all know we're in a place that we really have no control over. If it wasn't for the unexpected costs, we wouldn't be sitting here having this discussion. And I believe it is a serious responsibility of every one of us, whether we agree with the override or not, to point out that half or more of this money we're asking for is totally beyond our control. And I don't know if that's going to change people's minds, but at least they'll know the reality, the real facts, and what they do with it is up to them. But there's just so much crap flying, whether it's in conversations one-on-one, social media, you get a tenth of something correct, and you run with it, and you don't know ninety percent, and you make a decision based on really bad information. So, at least, we need to get some of this stuff clarified, and I know we don't have a lot of time, but I don't think it's fair for people to take something and run with it, and I know that we probably can't change their minds, but we need to try.
Well, and the other thing I think is important to the analysis too, is we're just taking a look at the, you know, what do we have to work with, right? So, there's twenty million, you know, twenty-one million, whatever the budget is. If we're saying, you know, for the time being, you know, the schools are eight million, then you pull that out, by the time you start breaking down what's, what's truly a fixed cost, right, and things that just can't be moved, I think the salaries are about five point six million or something like that, I think was, and if we're trying to carve out two million, call it one point seven, say we're not, forget the free cash, we'll keep using some of it, you know?
For to use?
Yeah.
It's gone.
Right.
I mean, it's gone. I mean, that's the thing. When you look at the, I'm sorry, when you look at the list of what is on this list, of what we need for the override, why we got to this number, I can't think of anything we have control of. Honestly.
Yeah, and so, when you look at the, you know, if you break apart, four and a half million of the budget is just in that section for employee benefits, is the retirement, the medical, right, but we're not funding this year, but the other insurance, yeah, that workers' comp on employment.
Okay.
That's five point four million. We can't really move the dime on the retirement. To your point, going forward. Right. You know, if we're more diligent about, you know, we're not adding positions unless there's attrition over here, so, you know, going forward, we can change behaviors, conversations, happy to have those conversations, because it's not really going to move any of that right now. The other thing that came up, the department head meeting today, I just want to bring up Annie McKenzie, who's talking about the trust and trying to help this whole group insurance trust issue. And I've heard a lot of people say, well, you know, if you knew it was going belly up, which we didn't, but if you knew it was going belly up, you know, why didn't you move to something else? And the reality is, there's, I mean, even if the GIC is the other major player for municipalities in the Commonwealth, that's the group insurance for the Commonwealth, right? And it's a much larger pool, but their premiums right now are higher than what we're paying for lesser benefit. Wrap into the conversation whether they're soluble, right? But that's an important piece of it. But every other indicator in private industry, I would say, and looking to other business owners here, we're all hearing from our carriers that we're going to be, if we haven't already gotten the eighteen to twenty percent increases, they are coming everywhere. So, it's, you know, in some ways, I think this is, you know, a harbinger of what's going to happen in the rest of the industry. So, point being, major conversation is, is, are people better off staying in the trust and trying to figure out how to change it so that it is a going concern? Or do we really need to jump out? And if we jump out, this cost is going down, was the point.
And I did an analysis of what I was paying per, per policy to what the town was paying a policy pre-increase, and it's fourteen to, to seventeen percent less than what I was paying for similar, for my company, for similar coverage. So, over the last five years, you add up, you know, fourteen to fifteen percent, you're talking about almost a million dollars of savings that we already, we would have, we basically already earned.
Earned, yeah.
Earned, because we were part of this insurance. Whether or not it's, it's, it's soluble, or it's a good idea, solvent, and going forward, it definitely needs to, needs to be addressed, but, you know, we're, I told Mike last, we have like, we need to get on...
Get out.
Yeah, we need to get on, ahead of this. This is, this is, this is something that is, is very, very scary, because we could, we're already in for higher increases, but to, to David's point, you know, my feeling is, is that you go and look at this number of, of, you cut, you cut the override in half, you're still going to have to get rid of all of these people, just to break even. And as Mike said, these are the top people, these are, these are the Alexes. These are also the people like Alex, and some of these people are also people that work in DPW that you can't even get rid of, because they were part of the FTE increase, because prior in two thousand nineteen, I looked it up, that these were contracted employees, and that's why they weren't on the FTE roll.
Were contracting up to small waters and some other places.
Exactly. And now their contracting rate is, is over a hundred dollars an hour. Scott sent me a proposal from a contracting company. That was two years ago, by the way, also. That's an older proposal. So, more than likely, that's probably closer to a hundred and fifty dollars an hour. So, you can't, as everybody said, you can't, you can't cut your way to make this work. We can't get rid of the senior center. That, that half, four hundred thousand dollar bond payment, we are stuck, not to say we're stuck with it, we are obligated to pay that for the next twenty-five years. That's not, that's not going to...
When we close it and lay everybody off, we're still going to pay that off.
We are obligated. Those are, that's the bonding rules. You can't assign it to anybody else, you're obligated. Even if you prepay it, there's a, there's a penalty to do that. So, these are very rigid financial instruments. It's not that simple of just saying, we're just going to go and sell it off. Same thing with the library. These are, these are municipal bonds.
Do we have a dollar amount that would, let's say we went back to town meeting on the twenty-third, that we would need to get through to June thirty of next year?
Submit that. I hear what you're asking, but can I say something? That's what we did at the other town meeting. We said, let's just get it through so we could go for an override, and now we're here. And we can't kick this can anymore. I mean, look at the items on there that are why we need this override. I don't see a solution, other than the override, I really don't. We can't cut our way out. You can't, you know, when I was at the, the meeting up at the Sugar Shack, somebody stood up and said, sell the vac truck for two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, okay? And people were yelling all kinds of things. They also yelled things like, oh, these are interlopers, the people who move into our town and they want to raise our taxes, and they call us carpetbaggers. That was a nice line of line. But it, it got pretty ugly, in my view. And in fact, Peter, I thought, did a pretty good job of talking through some of it. But I honestly think, when you look at these numbers, you, we have no choice. It's been thrust upon us. We're in a wedge that we've been going toward, very little, where we went towards it is that we should have just, when the fire department proposal came in, we should have just done a single override there. We would still need an override today.
I was just going to say, that...
We would still need an override today.
We'd still be coming back for the insurance.
But we would have not used the free cash, and if we hadn't used it for anything else, we would probably have two or three million dollars sitting in an account of free cash, because if you look at the charts we used during the forums, free cash at the end of the year, there was a certain amount of money in there, so we were always flush, we usually had a million bucks. So, we always, I think, rationalized, okay, we could spend four hundred or five hundred of it. Now, I've said, in my four years here, I always saw that we were always four hundred or five hundred thousand dollars short, and I just didn't understand why we just didn't And I just didn't understand why we just didn't go to voters and just say, look, we got to reset things because we're below this bar. But we had the free cash to do it.
So I would like to point out, because the town has said, going back ten years, we're already using free cash insurance. Had we done a minimal override at that point, and you add up how much the taxpayers would have paid in the cumulative of ten years, it would be much more than the amount that we're currently asking them to pay.
That's correct.
But they don't get that. And what we have done, and the select board's at fault. I haven't been on it that long, but I'll take blame for all the years I've been here. We should have been pushing this long ago.
Yes.
And we didn't, and now we're here.
The fact is, is that doing, as Mike said, cutting the town, we're just shooting ourselves in the foot.
But, yeah, and I, you said, we can't lay ourselves off out of this situation. But what I'm getting at overall here is that we can ask for a million times, we can have a hundred town meetings and a hundred ballot overrides. And if, until we find a number that's palatable to the voters, we're just going to keep banging our heads against the wall.
It's a big sticker shock.
Right. And so what I'm kind of getting at here is, can we find a number that is probably going to have to involve some layoffs to some degree somewhere, or some cuts, whether it's budgetary, whether it's personnel, whatever it is. I'm not saying cut the fire department, cut the police department, that's not what I'm saying. But can we present something that's palatable to the voters that gets us in the right direction so we can continue on operating as a town? Because if we just keep throwing it out there, I think we're going to end up right back in the same spot that we are now, which is a no across the board. And so we're all just treading water here, getting nowhere. Yeah, it'd be great if we could just business as usual, but that's not the way the votes felt. So what's the number we have to come up with to get us through June thirtieth of next year? What's the amount of layoffs that would happen in order to make FY27 doable with that smaller number and operating? I mean, let's look at those efficiencies. There's changes that can be made in snow removal and, I'm sure, fire and police response and whatever else, and fees we charge, all this has to come together. But at the end of the day, I don't think we can just keep pushing this forward and hoping for the best.
And David, the other point to add on to what you're saying too is, we do need the schools at the table.
Right.
And the reason being, again, everybody's very sensitive if we're in the school year. Nobody wants to freak people out by saying, yeah, yeah, let's just cut the schools. But the reality is that when we look at the medical increase, you know, I think some numbers are being run right now, a significant portion of that is attributable to school department personnel. And as a select board member and a former school committee member, I mean, I'm looking at all of it, I can't advocate for the non-school to pay the entire brunt of that through a reduction in services. So I'm hoping that, you know, again, collaboratively, to have Annie and the school committee at the table as part of this conversation for FY27 is critical.
I've got a question, because the budget for the schools, eight million. Somebody came up and said, what about that one point six million dollars, which was school choice?
They're using.
So if they're using that, so you're saying they're running the schools actually nine point six million dollars?
Well, that's.
That, well, that's.
I mean, I'm looking at if we're budgeting eight million dollars and if they're taking in school choice money, and that means, and if they have nothing left, then that means the school's running on nine point six?
I believe the school choice money is part of that eight million dollars. That's their overall budget, but some comes.
Okay, because I mean, the way it sounded like is that was an additional one point six million.
They also get, they also, I don't think that recognizes their other, they get money from DESI, which is Department of Education. That's not, that's not recorded in that amount. So there's.
So hang on, hang on, and this is something that, again.
I think, I believe, I believe it's more than.
Some misinformation at town meeting, all right? And I think some people here know it, but just to make sure. On the cherry sheet, right, that was being referred to, that's a state aid sheet. So that's what dictates how much we bring into the town. There are two pages. There's the revenue, and then page two is the assessments, okay? So if you just look at the revenue side, you're really missing a good chunk of the picture. So on the schools, it's complicated because we have chapter seventy, right? So that's the formula that dictates how much money the state gives to each municipality, okay? So that comes into the general budget, that's incoming on that cherry sheet. But we have sending charter tuition, we have receiving charter tuition, and we have sending school choice and receiving school choice. So you got all those buckets under that, too. The biggest number is the revenue, which is a school choice incoming. So when people complain and they say, how come there are all these kids that aren't, you know, from town anymore? And they say, we don't want to build developments because, you know, it's going to strap the schools. No, it's because our Hadley population of kids has gone down so much. The schools have done a wonderful job bringing in as many people as they can from the outside. And so we get money for that. The school gets to effectively keep that money to defray the cost of operations. When kids go out to charter, that's going through the town side of the books. So there's a delicate balancing act here that people really need to understand. And you need to look at all of the trend analysis and everything on that as well.
That's about a million dollars projected.
Is it? Okay.
Charter.
Yeah. So, I mean, and that's why when you hear people screaming about charter formula and all of that other stuff, the charter reimbursement has never kept up with the amount that we're paying out.
And our state aid is miniscule, and its increase is nothing. And we're getting, and we're in danger because of our low tax rate of not qualifying. You look at some other towns like Granby, their state aid is like twice of ours or something. I remember looking on their town budget. They get literally twice as much money as we do. They're almost the same population. We're obviously heavy.
And what's their tax rate? How much more is their tax?
Fifteen. Fifteen per thousand. Their actual assessments are assessed value is almost as high as our, well, they're mostly residential. We have, a third of ours, or quarter of our assessments are commercial. And their commercial is nonexistent.
So like Dave was saying, we could go around in circles. What is the number that the town wouldn't get hit by that sticker shock? And how much more my property taxes are going to be going up? My assessment values are going, going to be up to the town saying, okay, the forty-three hundred voters are going to say, okay, that's doable. Because I know, yes, I brought it up, and it's not a lie. Every five years, my property taxes are going up a thousand dollars. So don't tell me that's a lie.
That's not a lie, but there's an inverse relationship between assessments and tax.
Okay, assessments, but my property taxes because of the compensation is going up. So don't be telling people that I'm lying about telling them.
No, but.
So saying that, we have to find that middle ground defining out, what is the town going to think? This is acceptable, that it's not going to bankrupt me, I can pay my bills. I might do something with my life and not have to go, I'm going to be property taxed out of my house. And you could say, okay, of all the seniors or whoever they are, Susan's going to be helping them out. But even if their salaries or their revenues from what they make from their social security, it might just be a little bit over. But what they're qualified for, now that's just more money coming out of their pocket. That the seniors are going to be property taxing our seniors out of this town. And then they'll be renting.
I just want to correct you on that two and a half. The two and a half increases the town's ability to receive real estate taxes. So it doesn't mean that you're, so in other words, if there is a new building being built, there's a new, there's a new hotel, or there's a new apartment building, or there's a new, or there's a new house being built, that gets added on to the assessments. And that actually lessens the burden on everybody else.
But we're going by what we have right now, not what we're projecting in the future, what we don't know about.
What I'm saying is, is that that's not hundred percent accurate in the sense that it's not going to go up two and a half.
I see what I see in front of me right now. That's all I care about right now, and that's what everybody else cares about right now.
So when we talk about domino effects and the unknown effects of things that we're doing, when you're laying off people, the people who work for you, the morale goes right to the floor, okay? That's one. Two, we got turned down for a three million dollar grant for a water tower? For a water?
Water tank.
Water tank, I'm sorry. Okay. So we're going to have to come up with.
Why?
Why?
Yeah, why did we get turned down?
Why did we get turned down? We were turned down because our taxes are too low and our rates on water were too low. So they felt that our community wasn't doing enough on its own. So we're, here's your problem. You're going to save two million dollars at the override, and then we're going to have a three million dollar tax paid out over thirty years to pay for that plus interest, to pay for a water tank. That we would have gotten three million dollars, we'd only be borrowing six million instead of nine million.
And when they're applying for grants for equipment, just like Mike is, for whether it's equipment, for all these different things, when Alex is applying for grants for expanding fiber optics to the residents, to improving everybody's broadband, that they look at all of those things. Those are kind of the effects of all of these things.
So I will say.
Once again, what's the happy medium number to think about that the town would maybe be able to go until June of next year?
Right, and I think, Molly's going to slap me from across the room for saying this, but.
Can I get social?
Yeah. I'll hit her a point. But, and one of the things that we've been getting hammered on is the new FTEs, right? So, and granted, we can't bind future select boards or future finance committees to anything. But if we wanted to put hiring frees in place, that would say, no new graded positions without a finance committee and a select board approval. I think that'd be throwing a bone to the voters to say, hey, we're trying to do this. Combined with efficiencies that we can find, combined with some possible layoffs in order to save some money, combined with a override amount of a lesser amount. But if we can start making progress here, I'm happy to make the motion that we put a freeze on new full-time, new positions altogether without approval of both boards. So that way, there isn't the thought that, hey, we weren't consulted or we didn't understand the full cost of this stuff before it went forward. And granted, this may change, because I think as soon as there's a new board elected, right? Those motions don't apply. So this would apply through the spring. But it would at least show the voters that, hey, we're putting a freeze on this stuff going forward, and let's come up with a lesser amount to make things happen.
Are you looking for a single number or divide it into multiple articles?
Let's talk about it for a little bit before we choose a number. Because what I feel is that we're dealing with people, and don't be offended, Peter.
What you're saying to me is, if you're offending me, I don't get offended.
Because.
I don't get offended.
People, most of the people are thinking, like Peter just spoke, that the bottom line is, my taxes are going up, and that's all they see. We can have these intelligent conversations, and it's going to be meaningless to most people. So we have to factor that into our decision. The thought out there that I see is that we don't have any control over the finance of the town. Mr. McCretsky thinks that we come up with a budget, come up with some money to spend and then figure out a way to balance the budget. And I know that that's not how we operate, but there's a lot of people that think like that. So that's one thing. The other thing is, we talked about doing this all in one big number for a reason. Because if we don't, we're going to come back again and again and again. And I realize that we can't, obviously, the two and a half million is going to be a potential problem, depending upon what happens at the ballot. If it passes at the ballot, different thought process. If it doesn't, then we certainly need something. But I don't want to say, well, let's pick nine hundred thousand dollars because that's going to be palatable, and that'll get us through the next six months. And then in six months, we're back doing it all over again. I don't see it happening, that people will keep saying, yeah, okay, okay, I get it. You tried and it didn't work, and we're going to give, you know, we're going to vote for more money. So we've really got to think hard about this.
No, and I agree. I think there's going to, but I think the other side of the spectrum, that what Jericho was talking about, if we do nothing, and there's no layoffs.
We have to have a plan.
Yeah.
Yeah.
People are going to say, well, what did you cut?
What did you change?
So we've got to, this has to be a negotiation in order to find that spot that's acceptable to the voters.
And to your point, David, we also have to clarify that whether it's a budgeted position that might, because there's budgeted positions that are unfilled right now. So all of a sudden, somebody says, oh, I just saw this guy, he just got hired. Well, that's not, if there was a hiring freeze, well, that, those are not, those are two different things. And I think we want to make sure people, but that's what I don't want people to hold that against us.
I think he said, well, this is what he's talking about.
No, I agree. I just want to make sure people listening understand that.
So I'll go ahead and make, I'll make the motion that we put a hiring freeze on any.
New positions, you're not posted, please don't do that.
Who posted?
You're not posted for discussing it like that. You're posted to discuss special town meetings.
We can.
Put it on the October special agenda. Yeah, I'm sorry, you're not, I didn't post, we don't do that. We can talk conceptually about how we would like to proceed with our finance committee.
Okay, so our next meeting, I'd like to. I will make a motion to put a new hiring freeze on any new positions without the approval of, the majority approval of the select board and finance committee both going forward. And I don't want that to apply to already budgeted positions because we may need a police officer or a town administrator or something like that that's already in the budget.
We're going to need a police chief, Emily, and we're going to need all both.
So.
And they're going to cost more.
But I think it's important to show the taxpayers that we're trying to make some changes that they're screaming for. And then I also, okay, that was all for the next meeting, but. I really think.
No, final screaming is.
I really think that we need to look hard at coming up with a new number rather than just hoping for the best. And we also need to look at some layoffs or cuts to whether it's budgets or the way that our fixed expenses contract some things out. Because we'll see what happens the twenty-ninth, maybe I'll be surprised, but.
I do believe there's a large population of the town that has not been vocal on this. I think I see a lot of positive signs out there. I drove around today, I also see a lot of the stop the override. But I think that, I think it's going to be very close. But I do think there's a lot of people who don't show up at town meetings, it's difficult for them. I know many people who supported the override could not attend that meeting. That's why I think having a ballot isn't really, not only is it required, I think it balances it out for people who are unable to attend a meeting like that. Hopefully, those people are around that day and will take the time to come in and take the few minutes to do that and buy a cupcake out from a whatever base sales going on. But I do think that the people of Hadley, it's not all negative out there, it's not what I'm hearing. And I do think everybody has some bone to pick with something that's being done or not done. But I do think that overall, I think, I think the question you have to ask yourself when you look at this override is, am I happy with my town? Am I happy with my schools? Whether or not you have kids there, what you've heard about them. We have people coming from out of town to go to our schools. You know, are you happy? If you have a grandparent or an older person like myself, or a spouse or somebody who's using this place, are you happy that we have this building that we also use for meetings? If you go to a library, are you happy with that? And if you needed public service, well, then the North Hadley Fire Station has been involved in some of those calls, and we have an ambulance up there as well. And are you happy with our town? Are you happy with the way your streets are plowed? And with the pothole repair alone in this town is worth the need. Because I do drive through Northampton, and I'll tell you, you know. You know, and that's what people should be saying, is do I like things the way they are? Not, are they doing a great job tweaking this and holding that and cutting that? Are you happy with this town? And if you're happy with this town, you have to think very hard that if this number doesn't go through that we need, we are going to start seeing a very dramatic change. I don't think, even if we cut this number in half, that extra million you're going to have to come up with is going to be really hard to find. And we're going to have a lot more overtime. We're going to find, it's going to be a false, it's going to be a false solution. Because between overtime and paying contractors more to do things. Because between overtime and paying contractors more to do things, we're gonna end up spending as much money, we're gonna spend it a different way. That's my belief. And the last thing I wanna do is come back to the voters in a year or six months and say, we need another override. Because then it's really gonna look like mismanagement, which it isn't. This is inflation, we had a situation that we're in because of things outside of our control. And, and I, nobody wants to pay more taxes, really. Nobody likes seeing their taxes go up, you know, every year, whether it's state taxes or your excise, you know? But, you know, it is what it is. And I think we get a really great level of service in this town, I've lived in other places. And I'm hoping that people can set aside the anger and the, and the rhetoric that's going on and keep this town strong, that's my opinion.
Well, to just, to go along with David's point too, but let's assume it doesn't pass on. I think, I think everybody today has to be, again, fingers crossed, but if it doesn't pass on Monday, the select board is posted on October 1st, right? So we are meeting fairly expeditiously. And obviously, this will be, I'm assuming the primary, Mr. Chair, I'm assuming this will be the primary focus of conversation that night. That's kinda like, how do we, how do, where do we go from here? I think it would be, as you said, putting all anger aside. I've never thought when town meeting is confronted with such a split with finance and select board, that it winds up with a good end result. And damage is done, huge trust issues right now that we need to overcome. Misinformation out, unfortunately, the loudest voices have been able to promulgate just bad data that at this point, it's like a fool's error to even try to pull it back. But what I'm hoping is that between the select board and the finance committee, I mean, we can go off and go into our separate corners and do our thing, only to come back and pull our hair and gnash our teeth. But if, if we could somehow come together and agree on, okay, here are the things that are priorities that we need to look at, because we're gonna have to move fast, no matter what. So I'm, I'm hoping that we can find a way to do that.
I got a question as to. A freeze on the hires and you have the budgeted hires. Now, if it comes to the budgeted hires, is it, are you worrying about the overtime that would be if it's not within that? Your budget, say if you want a new officer and you don't get that person, is it because of the overtime that you're worried about because of the difference between? You know, you've got a budget for so many, for all your officers and you don't get that one officer, that it would go over budget because of overtime? Is that pretty much how?
Are you talking about a position that becomes vacant or new positions?
Well, pretty much like David was saying, it's like, okay, any new hires that's not budgeted in that department, so.
So for me, for police and dispatch, we have safeguards that are in place that allow us that when we have vacancies, meaning if somebody quits, when we resign, we have some safeguards in place that keep our overtime at a, at a manageable level. Something that I was tasked with the day I started, I was at town meeting and they were writing newspaper articles about what the overtime was, you know, that day. And the, you know, I brought a, a cost analysis to the select board, presented it. We've got enough officers that we could make these kind of changes, so we have these safeguards in place. So right now, just to give an example, I have five, five vacancies currently. I have three officers in the police academy, I have one officer out injured and I have one officer on paternity leave. My overtime should be five times what it is, but because of the safeguards that we've put in place, it's 1,500 bucks every pay period, which is a two-week period, so it's next to nothing. So when I have a vacancy, I, I don't necess, we don't wanna spend more overtime, even if it's 50 bucks, right? We don't wanna add to the overtime issue. But we haven't run over our overtime budget since I started in 10 years. Most of the reason is because our officers do different jobs somewhat. So about a year ago, we actually pulled two officers out of our patrol function and, and turned them into permanent detectives, because as Amy knows, we actually have been meeting with a lot of the businesses in town. We lose like over a million dollars in theft annually from our, our stores in town. And we don't want our stores to end up like the stores in San Francisco when they're literally closing down, especially since they helped with our tax base. So we've assigned people directly to help stop theft. So if one of those officers were to resign, I would be trying to replace that position because of the position, not necessarily because of the overtime. The overtime plays a part. I hope that answers your question.
And Chief, he have, he's got an emergency, but he, he just wanted to clarify one thing to make sure people understand because of the way that we split the, the budgeting process, we had, you know, the EMS and then we had the fire department, that, you know, right now, when we're looking at his staffing, and he said he's got two, two firemen on right now. It, but it's one, one department and that's how we're looking at it going forward, right?
So, so this is, I mean, just knowing, because I run my own branch, on staffing. I know that with the police, he's made it, so his, he has enough staff that he can take care of when someone else is out. I know with the fire, that his minimum is two people, but because he's 24/7, that's two people per shift and you got like four shifts there. That's two, four, six, eight, he's only got eight people. So you put one person out, there's, there's no, the only way to cover is by someone that's already worked all that time, it's overtime.
I just wanted to know what the difference between the two.
He's too thin, the only way I can see is, I don't see how he could cut without cutting hours. I, I just.
We're changing, changing the scheduling.
Yeah, I mean, he's.
From 24 to 12s.
Something that we're looking at. He's just so thin. And I do recognize that, that he's thin.
And that's, you know, you know, what you brought up is San Francisco and, you know, the optics of that. It, and we have people, we have full-time fire, we have full-time police. That sends a message to, to people about our town. That sends, sends an image to our town. And we have to preserve that image of what we have here. That's not something that we should be looking to compromise, just because it's financially inconvenient. And that, and what Paul said is 100%, is that we have something very special here in this town. You know, my family came here almost 40 years ago. There is no place else that I would ever wanna live in, to raise children, to have business, than here. Nowhere else. And that's special. People have to realize, I know, maybe you've been here four generations or whatever, I wasn't, I'm not part of that. I came here from another country. But this is special. And you don't realize how special it really is until you start seeing the degradation and the deterioration of our services and everything else.
To David's point though, you know, to get back into the realist, I love, I love that, I, I agree with you completely. I think between now and October 1st, we should, everyone should really seriously put some thought into how to proceed. Obviously, you're, it's gonna change based upon what happens on Monday night. But in preparing for the worst, I think folks need to think, what is the best way to, to get something to pass? And I know it's not, I don't even wanna say, you know, we don't need this, because, you know, Mr. McCretsky, who I, you know, I respect and is a lot smarter than I am, identified the same fact that we identified in that there's a 2.2 million deficit. That's why we asked for that amount of money. It makes sense, right? But I agree with David in that we're gonna be banging our head against the wall, because we're gonna keep going back and 600 people are gonna keep showing up and they're gonna keep saying no. Because of, you know, a DLS worksheet that says that they're gonna pay 150 bucks a month or whatever it is. Well, yeah, I mean.
80 dollars a month.
But whatever it is. But I, whatever it is, but I guess, you know, what it, what it comes down to for me is, you've put me in, in this position and I'm charged with, you know, public safety, taking care of the people who live and travel and work in this, in this community as a, as a police chief. But in the town administrator role, I'm, I'm, I'm in charge of your employees, your staff. And I've seen what Shardul described. I've seen people break down in front of me, people are absolutely terrified about losing their jobs. So I am, I'm gonna be, I'm gonna be in your small intestines, pushing you towards something, something that gets us to, to saving as many of those people as, as we can. These are people who are sacrificing themselves for this community. And, you know, Paul said it at, at town meeting. I, I just, we need, we need to do something. And so, again, to David's point, we need to be thinking in that direction Amy brought up, maybe you split it. I don't love the idea, not my call. I don't like the idea of pitting departments against one another and letting people say, well, I love the, I love the fire department, I don't necessarily like the cops, whatever it is. But I also, I don't see success in, in continuing to ask, and what they say, the true definition of insanity is doing the same thing over and over again and expecting a different result. I don't think it's gonna happen. But again, you know, we might be surprised on Monday night, then we move forward differently. But, you know, I just feel like we gotta be realistic.
I, I have a, a problem as part of this process of automatically assuming we should lay people off. Because that's telling the townspeople that we have too many employees. And I don't agree with that. And we're gonna do it to appease them. And I don't agree with that. So.
We're gonna have to do it anyway, because.
I understand, but not because, I mean, if, if we have to, we have to, I, I get that. But I just don't like offering it up.
Randy, that's why I think a good starting point is going back to taking a look at how, everybody should have in front of them a breakout of what's fixed. And we'll define that and what's variable, right? And I've always considered people fixed, but let's say for this exercise, they're not, all right? When you look at the percentage of the spending that is absolutely fixed, come hell or high water, again, the four and a half million, whatever number we were just looking at, debt service, 1. whatever million, and that's not gonna go away, no matter what. So as we start looking at what's fixed, DPW costs, right? Then there's certain things that, they're just gonna be there. Even if we shut down the library and senior center to reduce utility bills, we still have to pay the debt, right? There's not a lot to work with. And I think the sooner everybody kinda gets their head wrapped around that, the better. Because the reason there's so little to work with is because of all of the cutting that already happened in the budget process, right? So I don't wanna, was, yeah, I mean, the last thing I wanna be doing is letting people off. That's my starting point. But we've only got so much to work with.
I understand that. And then, and the other thing I would like to say is, is the finance committee willing to have a by-board meeting on October 1st?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, can we put that on the agenda, please?
And, and, and I, I just wanna say, you know, the, the people that are, that are not comfortable with this override, on the fight, especially on the finance committee, please bring very specific ideas, not general ideas, because you guys are critical to getting this thing over, over the hump. Your input is enormously important, like getting this. So you're, please be very specific on what you think we need to, we need to do. Whether, educate yourself or, or find out whatever, that this is the things that we would, we want. Because you speak for all, all those people that weren't, that voted no. And we need to know, we need to understand what, what it's, what you really want. If it's absolute zero, you know, that's, that's not, probably not gonna be a good conversation point. But we need to understand exactly, specifically, like, look through the budget and say, these are the items that we really would like to see reduction in.
So what are thoughts on breaking it out? I mean, I. I mean. No, I mean, I'm, I'm just saying, I have heard from people that came up to me right after town meeting, I would've voted if blank wasn't on there. I would be okay if.
We were in a position of leadership. What is blank?
Fire, fire.
Fire.
I was standing next to her.
But I mean, this person hadn't talked to us, I thought I would've voted if this wasn't in it.
So, I mean, from my view, it gives you an opportunity to let the town tell you without, you know, without something like a, a, a non-binding question, which we probably should've done a year ago. Without that, absent that, it gives you the opportunity for the town to tell you in real, real time, what they support and what they don't. So if that is truly an issue, they will get to tell you.
However.
I'm not, I'm just saying, that's the one side.
Yeah, you're right, that's, that's, the good news is, that's what it gets you.
Right.
The bad news is, you don't want people doing that in a, in an information vacuum, right?
Which is why I'm not a fan.
Right, and so I think that, so the challenge is, if we were gonna go down that route, we would need a lot of time to educate. I mean, just sticking with the fire for the moment, there's a whole history there, right? Which dates back, I mean, and, and there's no reason that everybody in town should know all of this, right? I mean, because people are going about their lives and they hope that we're all doing a decent job. And then all of a sudden, it's like, wait, how did that happen, you know? We had issues with reliability, and no offense intended to anybody, but the call force, right? This is nothing unique to Hadley. It's a phenomenon that's happened all across the country that have relied on call force fire departments. People's lives are very different today.
Sure, they're working two, three jobs.
Yeah.
My question to, to that person that didn't vote for, that, that said fire was the reason they wouldn't vote, is, is what part of it? Do they, do they not want a full-time fire department or do they have some other grudge against the fire department?
No, this was a genuine person that, that was, she, they seemed, sorry, it's really bad. It was a shame. No, no, I, I don't, no, no, in truth, I don't even, I don't even know her. No, I don't even know her name. No, but she, the, the, the question was, you know, her statement was, wasn't, was genuine. It wasn't, you know, it wasn't malicious or anything like that.
She, she truly said that, you know, I've, I've been here a long time and we didn't have fire coverage before and I didn't need it then, so why would I need it now?
But, but your neighbors might need it.
No, but, but again, I'm, I'm just.
That's what we need to start thinking.
Sure. But my point, just going back to the fact that she, I'm sure has no idea that we had problems with the call force. So she probably thought she was perfectly safe and if there was a call between seven and seven or six and whatever they had, that everybody was showing up and that it was fully covered. As the leadership of the town, what we knew is that there were starting to be, you know, holes in that process. And like most other municipalities, that's why we started moving towards a full-time fire department. Point being, all of these things have a story. So if we're going to break it into a menu, we need to make sure that people voting on the menu options understand, you know, to make a fully informed decision. And I worry about the time we have to do that.
But, but at the same time, some people have, not everyone is the same. So some people have different values and things that they place importance in in their lives. And that's a valid thing. Some people might not find certain things that important, some people might find it completely vital.
So the, just the argument to your point would be, if, let's just say we separate out, separate out the health insurance, right? People are saying, that's a waste of money, we don't need that, I'm not voting for anything, no matter, even if it, if it has the health insurance, it's a no. Doesn't matter if they're informed or, or misinformed, they're still voting no, because they've already got their minds made up on it. So if, if we separate it out, I, I think that it'll allow people to have a voice and maybe not shoot it all down. and maybe not shoot it all down at one time. And maybe we'll get pieces that will pass. And people will be able to speak with their votes and say, yeah, I know, I think the health insurance is good. Or I think the general, you know, the operating budget is good.
It sounds, so, sorry, I don't wanna cut you off. It sounds, I know that it might sound bad right now if we do it out. Oh my gosh, we're gonna be back in six months or a year, we're gonna have to ask it again. Good, good. Because that means we separated it all out, we said, okay, you guys didn't like the first one with everything included. Great, here, separate it out, now what do you want? Okay, great, you voted for this and this, not this, this and this. Cool, we'll see you in six months because the things you voted down isn't gonna work.
So why go to that? Why don't we social leadership here? That's the whole point. We're here for a reason. You volunteered to be on this board, you got elected, you got elected, we were appointed.
Right.
Okay? And they put us here for a reason. And that sometimes means saying things and, and standing up, like you have to do with children and I do with my cats occasionally. Is you gotta say no, okay? And I'm not saying no to, you, you have to be able to say here, you know, I'm looking at this list, five hundred seventy-nine thousand and some change for the, for the EMS fire. Okay, so let's take that out. Now we're back down to where we wanted to be, okay? And if we take out the midterm insurance and don't pay for that, tell them to go pay on Sam, we're not gonna pay you. Okay? So we lose our insurance, by the way, but that's okay. Because now we're back down to a million dollars, a million three.
But we can't.
But we can't. That's the point. We can't. The only thing on here that you can say is optional, sadly, is having a full-time fire department that also serves as a second call EMS, which I think is pretty efficient. How many fire departments have all their entire fire department doing an extra ambulance call? In between? How do we, how do we, how do we take those numbers and separate them out without having to go back to these people?
But you have a general fund operational override, which we can tweak to come to something that's more palatable. And I think that's, that's the optional part here is, we're not saying, oh, we don't need a fire department. We're not saying, no, we don't, we're not gonna pay for the health insurance, but it gives choices.
Yes, but, but when you, okay, but when we talk, go back to the, the cutbacks, we can't sell these buildings off, we're not gonna sell off the, uh, uh, back truck, okay? We're not gonna sell off the excavator that we just bought, we're using it, okay? And we're not, what else are we gonna get rid of? So, so we don't have any assets to really liquidate, okay? Maybe we could sell a couple of surplus older police cars, okay? Maybe we could find, I don't know, an old backhoe that we're not using as much, so we sell that off. There's fifty thousand dollars, tops. So, so, yeah, on a good day, thank you. On a really good day. But then, we have to go back to the layoffs. Because that's the only other thing you have.
The reason I don't like parceling out different pieces of it is, we all belong to this community. I use the senior center, I don't use the schools. I still am part of the community. And we all need to start selling that image. This is our community and we're all responsible for all parts of it, even if they are not something that we use every day.
And each other.
And each other.
We're responsible for each other. That's what makes it a community.
And, that's right, but at the end of the day...
But exactly, what happens if there's a no and what are we gonna do again?
Right.
Insanity, like I said.
But going back to what David said, there's six hun, there's roughly six hundred thousand dollars in what, those two items. So, and time is of the essence. We should, if, if that is something that is malleable, right? We should be focusing on that.
Yeah, and if we can squeak through till June 30th of next year, let's focus on that. Because that is a heck of a lot less in taxes.
Yeah, great point.
And so, if we squeak through and we say, hey, look, we went to you last override at town, you said hell no. So, we put together a smaller amount to get us through here. So maybe next year we have to go back and say, look, if you want this, this is what's gonna have to happen and this is how much it's gonna cost you. And then, let them, let them make the choices.
But in between that, to get there, we're gonna be laying off people, which is gonna cost us more.
I, I don't think we're gonna have a choice because, maybe I'll be surprised on the 29th, but...
People need to understand.
But to, to David's point is, if we come back and take these two items, modify them, and reduce them, and come back, and as Da- David said about the concessions, about hiring freezes, and, and so on and so forth, that's showing that we're genuine in give, the town is giving up something, right? That's our concession. Is that, and I think, again, you two, you three are, are really the key people on this team that's gonna tell us, like, is this, is this good enough to go forward? Because people listen to you. I'm sorry, but you, you guys are critical to this op, to this, to this process.
So if you think that we said yes, do you think the town was gonna actually vote yes on this override?
Do you really think so? I think, I think, I think the ninety...
Do you really think those six hundred people are that dumb that they would say yes? I mean, that's what you're doing. That if I say yes, everybody's gonna listen to me.
You, you diminish your importance. You know, Peter, you and Amy diminish your importance in this process. I really, I really wanna, and that's why I'm so, I, I am upset. Because you guys are very important. Your voice means something to this town. For the people that are watching here.
Shar Dool, think about this. If it's ninety votes, three of you, right? That's thirty votes apiece. Do you, you, you might have influence enough, and I'm not saying you do, but the potential is there. I mean, you, you, you don't wanna give yourself credit.
You're gonna keep throwing insults at me.
No, I'm looking at both of you.
Is that what people are...
Can I just tell you something? One of the biggest things that you have to do is listen to the people that are talking. Listen to them, okay? One of the things they're doing and, and that they're appalled at is us getting up there and saying, it's their fault. We're all in it. And blaming the taxpayer. You voted for this, it's your fault. No. They, you, we need to, we need to go in, listen to their concerns, listen to them, and try to hear what they wanna say and, and listen to what they're telling us.
I, I think you misinterpreted when I said, when I spoke like that.
And, and you, but you two coming in, and I understand what you're saying and what you're doing. But we, instead of coming in and ranting and yelling at us, you think that makes us feel better and wanna be on a team and want to try to solve this? That doesn't work. We rant at our, our, our constituent, we rant at the people out there, the taxpayers, that's not helping the situation. We need to show that we're a team, what we're gonna do, and we need to do this together.
Amy, you changed your vote in a meeting after you agreed to this.
We are talking about how to fix this, okay? What we're gonna do for our town. And what I'm trying to tell you is, listen to the people, stop yelling and stop making a big deal, let's fix this. Let's try to make things work, okay? Let's put the positives aside and let's start to say, you know, some of the good stuff and stop yelling at... Stop yelling and, and, and blaming people. And instead, let's fix this. And let's make a plan and tell the taxpayers what we're gonna do differently. How we're gonna, what, what we're doing and what we're gonna do differently. You said it, Paul, in one of the beginning meetings, when we first started talking about the override, you said, we need to tell them what we're gonna do differently. And that's what we need to do.
And, and the, the issue that I have is that you, as Paul said, you voted for this override. And you gave us then, you gave us the, the, the feeling that you were for this and you understood. And you never gave us direction on what, what you just said. That, that was, that, that is what I'm upset at. Because whatever you wanted, whatever the voices that you were listening to, you did not relay those in specifics, in specifics. Not just generalities, not rhetoric. I want to know the specifics because that's what we need to tell these people. They need concrete direction, very specific direction. You're laying off this person, you're reducing this in the budget, you need to provide us that.
Shar Dool, you're off.
How is that off?
You're off. And I was on the fence in the beginning and I told you, and I even called you and told you about it. And, and listen, listen. What I, when I come in, I've already talked, I've gone to the select board a few times prior, before, I, I talked to him last year. And I've gone in front of the public comment a few times and I said I was concerned. I talked about the spending, I said I was concerned. There's no surprises there, I have concerns. And that's all I've addressed. I've been on the fence ever since and I have concerns. That's all that is said. But instead, you're gonna just rant, I don't wanna hear, I wanna hear what we can do to fix this.
Well, you need to, you need to give concerns is a very vague and general term. That is not a specific item that we can go and move forward with. That is what I'm asking.
But October 1st, we're gonna start.
Yeah, that's, and that's the goal, right? And you, and I, this is not intending to be insulting, but you're very passionate on one side. Let's say Peter's a zero dollars, no way, no how. This is your insult, my, my turn to insult you now. No way, no how. No way, no how, it's not gonna happen. You're saying, I want all two point two, two point five million.
No, I, I am not saying that.
I'm just, I'm just saying. Both sides are gonna have to compromise, we're gonna have to come up with a number that's palatable both to the boards, together, to come together and put a unified voice to the voters, so that way, something can move forward. And we as a select board need to talk about the idea of splitting things. Personally, I think it would be a good idea because that's one of the main concerns I heard was, we could've made some progress last town meeting if we had split them. Now granted, that's a whole can of worms too, but there's pluses and minuses. Would we be in a, in a better position now if we had a portion of that two point two million dollars, probably? But, so we gotta talk about that and whether we wanna split it or not. But all sides are gonna have to give on it and we need to come together as a select board and a finance committee with a unified voice. Otherwise, we're not going anywhere. So that's the reason.
It would be great if we could pass two point two five million, where part of it was this year and it already passes, so then the other part kicks in. But we're not allowed to do that. We can't stage it to ramp it up, okay? That's, that's difficult, the law doesn't allow that.
But it does allow you raising it and not appropriating it.
Not appropriating it. That's right. So, you know, that, that's the problem that we're up against. And let me also clarify one thing. When I say that we voted, when I, when I've said that the voters voted for this, I wasn't blaming them, I'm applauding them. I think this building is fantastic, okay? I think, I haven't used the library, but I've been in it, okay? I think it's great that we got this done, I'm really glad we got it done when we did get it done. Because if we were doing it now, you'd think they're expensive then, you should see what we'd be paying today, you know? You know, I think our voters have done a really good job on keeping the reins tight on spending because everything has to go in front of them. And I think people should be proud of what we have. So I'm not blaming them. I'm saying, it's a good thing, you guys voted for this stuff, that's what we're trying to protect. So to Shar Dool's point, we are gonna, obviously, you know, Linda and I are gonna need some specifics as to how to move forward with this. And I think Amy brings up a good point in that, listening to the taxpayers is, is one of the most important things. I, at the risk of, you know, making people nervous or more nervous than they already are or hurting feelings and things, we're going to need to have these discussions and say these things out loud. Meaning, what are we hearing? What are you learning from people in the public? What are they telling you?
I'm hearing what?
Are they telling you, so, so two million dollars a layoffs?
I didn't say two million dollars, I just heard that there'd be no one, we'd be working the roads, right? I've been hearing from a lot of people, they're saying they're okay with the on-call, call force. And because it wasn't until four years ago, I'm also hearing, cut the fire department. Those are the first two things that I'm hearing. Now, I'm also hearing the hiring freezes and no pay raises. So those are the four things that I've been hearing most of as to potentially. Uh, no one likes laying off as a, as a boss. I was laid off as an employee, did I like it? No, it's happened, it's life. No one wants to do it, but sometimes you have to do that.
I, I mean, I can tell you that, you know, one of the, we're working on draft budgets right now and we're, you know, I, I told the, the department heads this at the meeting today, we're, we're targeting, currently targeting positions that are vacant. Because it accomplishes the same thing, it's a layoff essentially, the position is vacant, we're not paying anything for the position. And if we never get an override, the position will be eliminated. It's a layoff. The only thing unaccounted for that we, we don't have an answer for, we haven't gotten direction as to what to do, is what David brought up earlier, which is, we have a deadline of what you were just talking about. We have a deadline of when we're going to run out of money for the fire department.
Can you give us a list of the vacancies, so we have those numbers?
Yeah.
So we can at least, when we're looking at numbers, try to help. I, I don't know some of the numbers because I only have the numbers that you provide us in these meetings, so...
And what those potential impacts mean on the benefits and, and, you know, helping...
We would be happy to work on numbers or to do stuff, but we need the numbers to work with it.
I, I do think it's a good idea to pull the capital for now too and focus on, as much as I hate to say that because I'm on capital and I think it's, it's important, but I think for right now, we need to focus on...
You mean the second article?
Yes.
Yeah, I, I agree with that, I said that before.
Let's focus on operating the town versus trying to...
Well, I think you oughta wait until the 29th because based on the 29th, you have to see what the voters are gonna say.
Yep. Yeah, this, this conversation may be moot at that point. But, you know, again, the draft budget does include, it doesn't, it doesn't go out as far as like OPEP contributions and things like that. It's more of an operational budget cut. So you'll have those numbers when we, you know, when we meet on the 1st, that's one of the things that we'll, we'll do to the select.
Molly suggested, which is a list of the fixed and the non-fixed.
We're, we're, what we're preparing right now is a, is a worst-case scenario budget so that you have a place to make decisions and move forward. There are, there will have to be layoffs in this fiscal year if you don't, if you don't get an override. And then, as Amy mentioned in the beginning of the meeting, more in 27, much more in 27. Because that's when the full breadth of whatever the health insurance increase is going to be, is going to hit us. And we'll be walking into 27 with no free cash. So those, those holes will need to be filled. The only hole that we need to fill for 26 is the two, two-thirds, maybe three-quarters of a year of the health insurance costs that we have currently. So, that's what we've identified, those, those vacant positions to cover. So there are layoffs and they are, you know, we have, we have to target, you know, the larger departments of dispatch and, you know, police and, you know, some, some of these other, other positions. And in the hopes that we won't actually have to, have to, have to lay, lay people off if, if we can get something. But again, back to David's point, if you can find this middle number and figure out where you can make those other cuts and go back out with something, we can stem the bleeding, so to speak, for 27. I understand what Paul was saying earlier, which is split it in half, half for half now, half later. I mean, that people aren't stupid, they're not gonna be okay with that. To, to what, what you were saying, Peter. I don't, you know, I certainly don't think people are stupid in that if you guys voted yes, they would've said, yeah, let's do that, please raise my taxes by eighteen percent. But I think the second time, this time, if you do these things and you do the due diligence and you tighten the belts like we've been told to tighten the belts, listening to the taxpayers, and we save as many possible people as we can to keep the services the way that they are, I think they will listen to you. I think if you did vote yes and it was unanimous and both boards were on board with something that is, that works for folks, I think they would.
And I think working with one set of facts, we can interpret them differently, you know? But working with information that is put forth by people who know how to pull that information. So, you know, if somebody, by this committee's select board, if we all say, hey, we wanna see the median tax rate information or whatever, we wanna see where happening falls, so that we all have the same information. It's not being put together elsewhere and potentially, as has happened incorrectly. And then running with it, I think that will go a long way too because, you know how it is. I mean, you, you know, look at the world we're living in, you read two different articles and, you know, it's a speech and, you know, you get this over here and you get that over there and you're like, did we just watch the same video? You know? So I think having the numbers be consistent, again, they can be interpreted contextually differently, but that's really gonna be important because that's, it's just, it's not helpful.
I'd like to see, if we could ask the schools, because it's gonna have to touch every department. I'd like to see if they can come up with a number that would get two to three hundred thousand dollars of a difference, that's less than three, four percent of their budget roughly. that's less than 3, 4% of their budget roughly, if I do, I'm not the greatest at that.
You can go to school, eh?
Yeah, well, I have pockets. But I think somewhere in that range would kind of be equivalent to what the other departments are gonna have to endure, even if we were able to pass, say, a million dollar override, something along those, those lines, or 1.5, or whatever it would be. I think we'd ask, I don't think anything should be off the table.
Oh, no, 100%, and, and we still have to, I still have to talk to, we've already started conversations with Amy, trying to figure it out, I don't know 100% what the rules are for, once a school committee approves a budget, whether or not you can actually dig into it in that fiscal year. But unfortunately, if we don't get an override, if you can't touch it this fiscal year, the next year's gonna be way worse, as far as cuts from the schools. So, I, I'm, we're, we're having those discussions, and I, I agree that, that we have to spread the pain out. But back to my original question, I mean, are you hearing anything different if we're listening to the public? Or Andy, the folks that, the folks that voted no, and, and, you know, are tied in, so to speak, with, with, you know, a lot of folks who voted no, is there, are there other things that we can be looking at besides what Peter just mentioned?
I've heard some people talk about, a little bit about, why don't we use more contracted services? I've had that come up, I've had people say.
Yeah, I've heard that one as well.
In what department?
HR. Payroll, or things like that.
Okay.
But we're talking about small dollars.
And I've heard it in, in, in like DPW services and stuff like that, in DPW area. I mean, in, in some things I've heard, but it's too late, because someone said, like, about the vector truck, they, they told me about a company that where you could, we could've got the same services for the vector truck. And I'm like, well, I didn't know that when I bought, I, I voted for the vector truck, but I didn't know anything about that. And I do the best we, we can when we vote for a lot of these capital items. The capital items come through, and we listen to all the different, uh, both sides. So I have no issues with the capital items, because we just do the best we can.
That was a town book, there's nothing you could've done that, that was three years ago.
But.
For spending.
But, there's other things, it's like, can we, you know, other towns, can we rent out? Like, can we, can, like, are other towns needing a vector truck, can we, you know, can they lease from us? Or, we have special, we have a lot of great equipment here, we have a lot of great stuff. Can they, can, can we, we, we have a, a great fleet, could they use us? Because don't tell me Leprit, Stoopsbury, all these other places have all this equipment. So that was one thing, I've heard people talk about, yeah, a lot about contracted services. I've heard people talk about, um, the fire is the one thing that people did mention, but that's because I think that was part of a lot of the public forums. We picked out the fire. That was, it wasn't the police that was picked out, it was, or, or the schools picked out, it was the fire, right? That, that was a big thing, so the people, that's what they aim at, is that fire.
And originally, that was a potential split out warrant article as well, and that, and, you know, but it was, the decision was made to consolidate that and go all in.
And, and my question to you is that, do you feel that we need a full-time fire department? Do you, me, regardless of anybody else, do you feel that a full-time fire department with a second ambulance is something that is worthwhile keeping?
I like the full-time fire department. But, you know, it's, 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 it comes at a price.
And, and that's what I wanna hear, right? Obviously, that's what I wanna hear from you, 'cause, 'cause, and that's what I think people need to hear, is that you're, you've been a strong supporter of, of, of this, of this thing, of the fire department, and you see the value in there. And that needs to be presented, that you, in, in these meetings, and in your voice.
If we're, if we're tight, you know, I don't know, I, I've also heard people question, you know, about the ambulance, because we have two ambulances, you know, things like that. That was a, a question, you're just asking me what I'm hearing people talk about.
Two, two ambulances, meaning have action, have two?
No, no.
We have two. We have two.
Oh, why do we do, right, okay.
We bought one for 20,000, and the outfit it, and the other one we got for 75, and we just painted it, I think.
Yeah.
But those don't cost us operationally.
I think this is a, we're complicating it, and it's probably my fault, but I, I, I just think this is a much simpler conversation, that, to Paul's point, we, we need to show leadership, and decisions need to be made, and it needs to be put forward to the town. And we need to simply explain, we listened to you, this is what we heard, these are the things, these are the changes that we made, will you do this?
Yeah.
Will you do this for us? And I, viscerally, Amy's thought of, well, you know, we offered you these two things, you picked this, now we're coming back for another override, told you so, kinda thing. Viscerally, I feel that in my soul, you know, I feel like, yeah, well, what did you think was gonna happen?
The book of Exodus, right?
Well, you know, what did you think was gonna happen, kinda thing. The problem is, is that, Shar Dool made a good point, and again, this is something that I can't get past, in that I see these folks every single day, and I, I try to keep their spirits up, and we have department head meetings, and we talk, and, you know? And there's not much you can say to these, to these folks right now, there just isn't. There's no way that you can fix the situation, morale is not good, and these are real people. And so, you know, like I said, I'd love to, to be able to say that, because this is why we selected this number, this is why we put this work in, and we are overcomplicating this issue, because folks, they just wanna know that you're, they just wanna know that you're doing the best, you have their best interests at heart. And it's tough, because you have both sides, you know, you have folks that work for you, and folks that pay for those services. So, I, again, Monday, we'll find out what direction we're gonna head, but I, I just feel like we have to be realistic about it, and listen to what people told us, as much as we may disagree with what they said.
Do we invite the school to next meeting?
At least Danny, if she can make it, and if not, then as soon as possible thereafter.
You might wanna invite Scott, because if we're talking about contract services, I think he has a lot of information on the actual costs and viability of some of those things.
I love the ideas, right, like, those are, those are great ideas, and some of the other things that came up are awesome, but these are operational ideas, in that, you know, as we work through a budget cycle, hey, if Amherst calls and says we need your back truck for two weeks, okay, we're gonna hit you with an invoice, kinda thing. I just don't think those are things you can plan a budget around.
No.
Nice to have that funding, but.
And that's more for FY '27.
Exactly. It's, it's not, it's not, it's not solving the problem, but it's things that people just.
But, but.
Just throw out there.
Let me just counter, we're gonna need liability insurance, we're also gonna have to see an armband. I mean, seriously, these things are all complicated, people come up with these ideas. And, and I have had people come to me and say, why aren't we just using this company that's in Hadley to do this job, and another company in Hadley to do the other job for another piece of equipment we bought? Because the board made a decision, and the people of Hadley, I think rightfully supported it, that we have certain equipment when we need an emergency.
So Paul, I think the, the idea now is just to not resolve those, but let's put them all on the table. Right.
And then. See where it falls.
And again, carve out, that's a, that's interesting idea, not gonna have any impact on FY '26, but let's prioritize that for research for FY '27, because it'll defray costs down the road, and that's all legit, right?
I, I did wanna say one thing, and I know, because you said at some point, we have to just tell people no. But at the same time, these are the people that also elected us, and I have gotten calls from people.
They?
They. It's been more than one, no, I, I mean, and, and it's interesting, because it's, it's funny that when, when things are good, nobody calls me. When I was the chair of the board, nobody talked to me. Apparently everyone else got to talk to me, but nobody talked to me.
I would call you.
Oh, no, 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 but I, but I mean, like, but town people.
Yeah, right.
And people have said, you know, you go into these town meetings, and we see 500, 400, or 4, you know, 4, 401, 5, and we trusted you, we followed you, we voted for you, we put you in this position, and now nobody trusts you. Now if you run again, you're probably not gonna be elected. And I was like, okay, then that means you're calling my vote, that's like, okay, okay? Like, I'm sorry that I have let you down. So, that's like the war, right, where it's like, not really a war, but it's like this dilemma, where you're like, okay, like, we need this, we, we need, you know, maybe not the, the 2.2 or 2.3 million, but, okay, fine, we'll, we'll bring it down, we'll, we'll in good faith do this. But you're, like, if there's, you know, you're still saying, like, they're still saying, if they still say no. It's like, okay, well, then we, we were elected to be your mouthpiece, to make sure that we're doing this. So I mean, I'm, I'm personally stuck on this.
I agree. I, but again, I just, I, I just think that you, you need to focus on the fact that, I, I haven't heard here tonight, even from Peter, I haven't heard, absolutely not, never will I give you 10 cents more. What I've heard is, listen to what the folks told, what the public told you, change it, and come ask us again. That's what I've heard. I may be wrong, but that's kinda what I've heard. I think it's a good point, right? Like, we do have to consider the worst-case scenario if we are told no again, even at a lower number. We can try it a third time, at a even lower number, we're not gonna get what we need. Worst-case scenario, yes, is terrifying. I mean, if you don't get anything, this town, it won't be the same. It won't be the same.
Yeah, well, whether your demons are speaking to you or not, we need to try again.
Yeah, a lot of things too, are perception, right? So let, let me just talk about the fire department for a minute. I'm, I'm a big advocate of the fire department. I, I see what good they've done for the town, I see the flags they put up, I see how much of a community effort they put in. They do a ton for this town. But sometimes, we need to change their perception, and I get, we only have two firefighters on duty, so if they need a cup of coffee, they're gonna take the fire truck to go get a cup of coffee, okay? And then, when they do, the fire truck's going around and around, and everybody, so the perception is, what is that doing, right? It's the perception, it's not the actual. So somehow, we need to look at that, and listen to the people, and, and, and between information getting out there, and maybe we change a little bit of our behavior, not all of it, but some, maybe a little, and we have to change that perception, that people think that we're just driving around in a fire truck, right? Or something like that, that we're wasting money, that, that we're, that, what are we doing? We need to be 100% transparent, in that we are not wasting any money, and this is what we're doing. So it's hard to change people's perception, but that's what it is. And it might not be accurate, it might not, it might be very well that, that they hear, now they have to run to a call, but they don't know that. And, and they see a fender bender, and they see the entire public safety at that fender bender, right? And so they're like, what is going on? Or they see something small, and they see everybody there. But we either need to change what they see, or we need to get more information out there, but it's the perception that hurts.
Well, I think Molly hit on it earlier, being on boards, we know a lot more of what's going on in town, and why it's going on. And yes, you get an emergency call for the accident, you send the fire department, in case there's gas on the road, you send ambulance, in case somebody's hurt, and you send the police to deal with traffic. Of course you've got everybody, but people don't think about that. And you don't know until you get there what you're gonna see. So they all need to go, and, but we just need people to pay more attention to what's going on, because I'm sure we have tried in various ways to tell the town, and they don't have time. I know from the senior center, we sent out a newsletter, and people say, I didn't know you were doing that program? How can you do any, you can't force feed people if they don't wanna know.
Well, that's the important of the, and everybody always criticizes the 500, 500, you know, from select board and finance committee on, on every article. And there's a lot of articles in the past that I said, yeah, okay, and, you know, maybe I'm not 100% happy with it, but that's not what I'm here for, just to get my way. It has to be something that's palatable to everybody, and I think that if there's a number we can get to where it is, 500, 500, in support of something, that would go a long way to telling the people that, hey, not everybody's happy with everything they got, or they gave up, but at the same time, this is what's best for the town. When there's a massive split between boards, or on the same board, then I, I think we have a really hard sell to the voters at this point.
That was my point, in that, you know, if you, being so vehemently against it, or having really strong opinions, even if you weren't vehemently against it, if you were on the fence, but your, your opinion was strong enough that you voted no, I feel like if you could find a middle ground the second time around, if we, if we needed, I think it will, I think it'll tip the scales. I just, I, I don't think you should sell your voices short, like, kinda what Shar Dool was saying earlier, some people listen to you, you're on this, you're on here for a reason.
I think the biggest thing is, they're just looking at the end of the month and the bills that they have to pay. That's, that's it, all it just comes down to, whether or not they have a fire department, everybody would love to have the fire department, they'd love to have all the brand new vehicles and whatever it is. It all comes down to, what can they pay at the end of the month of paying their bills? And that's why they're making these decisions. You might love it because of all the things that the town's given, but they are still having to pay their monthly bills going, how much more do I have to pay? And they might not be seeing those services that they're getting, of the not having to use the fire department. I mean, if a house nowadays goes up, it's not gonna be saved anyway. Sorry to say it, they're gonna knock it down, unless it's a brick house, the house is gone. It really is with the stuff. But it all comes down to your wallet, and that's what everybody's looking at, thinking of the, the, uh, the increase in their property taxes, and the compound interest that every single time going, I'm not getting a 2% raise, but that everybody else is getting 2% to 3% raises, I have to now work overtime to pay this guy his 2% to 3% raise, every single year. That's the tough part that people are having to swallow.
I also think that part of the, you know, some of this is certainly, you talk about perception, and also talk about messaging. And when we get to messaging about, like, tax rates, people are in there, they're looking at their tax bill, and they're looking at increases here and there. Again, we know that there's a lot of manipulation, assessments, all that, that kicks into it. And when you try to really drive home the point, that you guys are getting a sweet deal, you know, if, you know, it was great when you had it, but you're going up. I think that that messaging really was a swing and a miss, and that we should be saying that, you know, that we're trying our best to save your money as much as you can, and spend it expeditiously. Some people moved here 40 years ago, and their taxes have gone up in those 40 years. And they're looking at their bill, and wondering, you know, well, what part of my retirement savings is this gonna be coming out? Not just, I'm gonna, you know, it's nothing to me, I make $6,000 a month, what's another 8 bucks? You know, these types of things, we have to be conscientious of the messaging the, the next time around, and not, in, in some feedback, beat people over the head, that, you know, they were getting a good deal, and this is, this is, this is an absolute must, this is. We have to work with the taxpayers, and, and these are the people who we report to, these are the people who vote us in, these are the people who fund us, and we have to, you know, be cognizant.
Yeah, I heard that, we were very preachy.
I, I did hear a real pushback on the first hour and a half, which is why the moderator changed the tack, and cut the, cut the remaining speakers back, because the natives were getting restless.
It's gonna be a riot.
Well, I also have heard feedback on, when we just displayed the rates, that it was disingenuous, and I think you were starting to touch on that, was, you know, okay, great, we, we have the lowest in Hampshire County. But the assessed values aren't the same everywhere in Hampshire County. So if it's, you know, 13.8, or whatever it was gonna be here, but you go to another town that's 14, 15, but their assessed values are a couple hundred thousand dollars less than us, it's really.
thousand dollars less than us, it's really, like you said, not a good deal. So they thought that that was on our end, very deceptive when we presented that.
Well, I think, I think, you know, it should have been put in the context of the median household and it, again, it's kind of like, take the data points, you know, in retrospect, the two of them should have been taken together because even if you take the actual bill, I think we're ranked two hundred and forty-nine out of three hundred and fifty-one municipalities. I mean, we are still taking assessed values and everything into account, very low in Hampshire County.
I just want to change that messaging to, this is what we're getting for what we're asking, not, you had a good deal. You really, you really were a little buck up and pay more. I mean, we really need to focus on.
I think that information in this context is relatively useless.
Yeah, well, at this point.
Well, no, even from, from the get-go, I mean, Peter's point is really what we're dealing with. Nobody wants, and none of us want our taxes to go up. We all, we all know that.
There's no increase per, there's no increased value. We're not getting anything more.
Right. So that's what we, no, we have to focus on.
That's kind of hard. I, I fully understand that would make me mad, too. Yeah.
We could have been paying, paying zero taxes and it went up to a dollar and people would scream because you raised my rates. So we, I think we all understand that that is the real issue. And I don't believe that we've been doing a bad job of guiding the town and spending the money. Uh, we're just in a bad place and we're the, as Paul said at town meeting, you know, we're the ones getting shot at for all these problems and we've got no control over it.
And it's every town. Green Bee, I, I look at Green, you know, I saw what's going on in Green Bee. And I, I look at Green Bee because it's pretty close, very similar population. We have a significantly more commercial, but, you know, on a residential level, they're paying, they're paying more taxes than, than we are. You know, their tax rate is higher, their assessments are almost exactly what we are, our assessments are. And they're paying more and they need to, and, and they have a full-time fire department and they're gonna be, they're gonna be spending more money. Their, theirs is only going up because they're dealing with the same, uh, issues that we're dealing with, with, with the health insurance.
I do think that's fallen on, I, I, I think deaf ears though, as far as, like Randy was just saying, it could have been zero dollars and it went up to a dollar. It doesn't matter whether we're the lowest in the, in the whole country. What matters is it's going up and I don't want it to go up. So I think making the comparison and say, whoa, you know, we're gonna be second lowest in Hampshire County now or whatever.
Doesn't make it, doesn't make it.
Nobody cares. They care that it's going up and it doesn't matter whether it's five cents or five hundred dollars a month. That's the issue.
Well, that's part of our homework, though, is to think about the messaging that's going to land, right?
I guess my point is that other, this, we're not, this Hadley is not immune to these, to these forces. And a similar town is facing the same burden that we're, we're experiencing.
Well, I would hope people realize that and to Molly's point, everybody having the same information, right? If people are so blind that they don't realize that this is happening everywhere around us, then we don't stand a chance.
Which is why I think we shouldn't complicate the issue. I, I understand we want to have some messaging, but I think the messaging should be focused on, what did we change? Yes, we made a mistake on the messaging that we used. Yes, we were preachy. Yes, we asked for too much money. Yes, we didn't split it up the way that maybe some folks thought we should have split it up. Acknowledged. What did you change to bring it back to us? And I think that is the singular message. We saw that nobody wanted to really speak. What did we have? Four or five people at the microphone? That's unheard of. I mean, unheard of. And this one should have been lines out the door.
Well, they wanted, they wanted to, but it was cut too short. I understand what you're talking about. I think if you're saying no hiring freezes, but if you say, we're gonna, you know, give them a nibble and say there's no hiring freezes, they're not gonna fall for that.
No, I, I think hiring freezes is good.
Oh, I think it's good, but I think there would have to be, like you said, more than just, that the preaching and all the other things.
Yeah, I mean, October, if this gets voted down, October first, make no mistake, is going to suck, right? Decisions are going to need to be made because there is no way to get that number down without making those tough decisions. So it is going, prepare yourselves. It is going to be rough.
And we're gonna lose a lot more than, whatever, whatever we're not gaining by raising the taxes, by keeping it the same, we're gonna lose significantly more than what we think we're gonna lose. People, you know, there was a, there was an article that said, everything's gonna be the same, the children will be educated and blah, blah, blah. Yes, to a certain degree, certain things will probably stay the same, but other things are definitely gonna degrade in, in the town.
Including morale.
Well, can, I was gonna say, in talking about morale, can I ask a question that, I mean, you're in town hall, I mean, are people looking to jump ship before it sinks?
I've had many people in my office that have said, if you hear that I might be even remotely looked at, would you?
Give me a heads up?
No, give me a heads up so I can, so I can go.
People have asked, my brother, they've had, they've, you know, town employees have come up to, you know, asked, very similar, not, it's not, not directly. And I've, like, just by talking with the, with, with Mike, the both, both chiefs and with Scott, you know, it's, it's pretty, and being in town hall, it's pretty bad.
Well, in Northampton, I don't know if, um, everybody saw this or not, but Northampton, um, fire department, uh, has put out an ad perfectly timed, making sure everybody knows that they have significant hiring bonuses, et cetera, et cetera. So they're on a, a hiring spree.
And I've had, uh, people who have, who are long tenured here, decades of time working here, um, exact words were morale has never been this low since I've worked here. And that's saying so because I've, I've worked here that long and I'm seeing it, I'm seeing it as well across the points. It's just, um, yeah, I mean, everybody's, they're all pretty worried.
And unfortunately too, then people start, talk, talk about having a menu of options, right? I mean, then people start looking at, well, you know, here's my neighbor and, well, my job's more important than, you know, and I, I think by and large, people are sticking together, but there are elements of that which is completely human nature, right? Um, you know, Peter used the word before, common term, essential and non-essential personnel. I think of that in terms of the snow day. Um, is the only time I use that, but, you know, how do you tell, you know, somebody at the library or the collector's office or HR or whatever, that they're not essential? I mean, so you, you're language like that and they start self-identifying. So I, you know.
But again, you know, I, we don't, we don't, we don't wanna have to go down that road, but, but in order to get to that end, those discussions are gonna have to happen if, if this, if this is a no vote.
Yeah.
I don't know any other way to do it.
Can I hit the red button for the select board?
The red button?
You know, Paul Jobb.
Paul Jobb.
Oh, absolutely.
All right. Make a motion.
Amy's still got about fourteen items left.
I was just gonna add.
Oh, are you serious?
Easily.
Oh, oh, my.
I'm sorry. Select board can cut you short.
Select board.
Well, some of it was, um.
Sure, we talked about it.
Yeah.
Yeah. Some of it was Paul wanted to put some of it on, um, I, I think he might have hit it. Now I understand where he was coming with some of the stuff because I didn't even know. I just put on whatever he requested. Um, and he had an idea of, uh, a volunteer furlong, furlough.
It's something we did at our company particularly during the summertime, um, which was VTO as opposed to PTO, voluntary time off, which is, uh, they had to still meet a minimum number of hours, um, for their benefits. But if, if they wanted to take time off unpaid, it was an opportunity for the, uh, both the company, the company saved a little bit of money and people to get time off that didn't affect their PTO. So they wanted a few Fridays off and a Saturday, uh, during the summer rather, but they still wanted to keep their vacation for some family trip, you know, during the winter. They were able to do that. And it was something that was suggested and actually proved to be a pretty valuable tool. Everybody was happy with the results.
Anything like that can be on the table?
No, I, I like that. I do. As I said, that's a good idea. Um, I listed town administrator reports or liaison reports in case you were, had stuff to report, because sometimes you report to the select board, you have a town administrator report, and so I just started listing that because it's great stuff. I, a lot of times, listen to, go back and listen to the select board, but I figure you already have it so you can tell us to, keep us up to date.
Yeah, I mean, everything that I was gonna report about, um, I think we've already talked about.
I think, hi, Tom.
Even without an official hiring freeze, you know, we're not, we're not doing anything as far as hiring is going unless it's an absolutely critical position. Um, all of our projects and things like that are completely paused. Anything, anything that, you know, we've been discussing, D W building and all that is all on pause. So the only other thing I was gonna talk about was, you know, what Amy asked about, which was how, how are the staff doing? I was just gonna make sure that everybody was aware.
Uh, the next is the Route Nine, new growth zoning hotels. It's stuff that we talked about last time. I just left it out there. Um, at one point, we were gonna talk to, we wanted to have some conversation with the select board because it does affect our, um, income from rooms tax, meals tax, kind of stuff like that.
And just on that point, um, you had been on the Housing and Economic Development Committee, right? And then you would step aside just because of your other time commitments. But this, we take these topics up all the time as well and Bill Myers there provide an update. So it's great if somebody from finance committee wants to be on it. We have a vacancy right now that, so I don't know if anybody wants to participate. It's the third Thursday of every month and then you would get this information more directly.
Is it evening meeting or daytime?
It's a Zoom meeting at six o'clock, third Thursday of every month.
Can we ask, or Randy, uh, is it okay if we talk to the planning board at some point about the long-term lodging and all that extended state finesse? Cause I'm getting a lot of.
I'm definitely worried.
That's supposed to be on our agenda when?
October first.
So I think we'll talk about that.
I don't know. That's elsewhere. We were, we were waiting to get some information back from the town council. I'm kinda planning, Bill wanted to talk to Lisa about a couple of things to clarify a few things. It's on the agenda.
And then the other thing about the Route Nine is there's a, a steering committee, uh, this forty R bylaw, which would allow for mixed use housing and commercial stuff. So we're, we're working through that, see where that ends up, but that would give an opportunity for more development on Route Nine.
Yeah.
So we'll see. Hopefully that'll pan out.
Uh, communication, one of the things I thought would be good is, um, is to work on our communication, especially between the boards. One of the things I thought we should do is the finance, is we should have regular meetings. You have twenty, I can, we can count on the select board being there every first and third Wednesday of the month. Um, I think we need to come up and commit to a regular twice a month meeting, even if we down the road don't end up needing it, we can cancel it. Um, that way, um, then too, when you need to spend money or something is coming up, you want to have a con, a new contract that is out there, something is coming up, you're gonna do a raise or something, whatever it might be, and it affects money, however it affects money, but it affects income, some type of finance, you can discuss it with us. We can be on the same page so that it's not at, at, at just budget time. So I think that, um, we come to, you know, I think the buy boards is a good thing, regular meetings. And once a month, maybe we go to yours as a buy board meeting and then one month, uh, maybe another month you come to ours. So it's like this. And I think that the more regular set meetings that we have and we're on the same page together would be good. Um, so I'm just saying it's a commitment to us. I say we commit to more regular meetings and then you could commit to us more to bring us on board on, um, any new hype, any new spending of any sort. I know that in, in my neck of the woods, when I spend money, even such as if I have to hire someone, even if I'm hiring the same person, like I have so many people, if I'm gonna hire again, they wanna look at my numbers, make sure my number is justified, continuing that hire. And every single hire I do gets signed off by my CFO. It goes all the way to our accounting department. I need, I need a new camera and I have to put it in my budget and it goes to the CFO. And everything I do, even if my marketing has to get signed off by accounting, so that they keep the budget and they know what's being expected. So I figured if there's a way that we can be on the same page on a lot of this stuff, that we can keep a track too, and we can keep track of what's going on during the, in the middle of the year, you know?
Are you talking about like above and beyond budgeted vacancies or depending on it?
I'm talking about when you, like, if the, oh, someone's contract, you, you're gonna need raises, okay? So you're gonna give a raise. Okay, I'm gonna, this is where, mark this down, we're spending, uh, we're spending ten thousand here, we're spending twelve thousand there, we're spending fifteen thousand here, or we're gonna do something. Let us know.
Well, that's typically gonna be the budget, right?
Well, no, I mean, you do it during the middle of the year so we don't know.
But, um.
In general.
No, no, but, um, I, so.
Or even when you have, after you maybe negotiate, like you're doing union contracts, like, we need to know so that we can even get in our head, how much is it gonna be? Is it this, are all the union contracts the same? Is everybody a three percent raise, you know? Or maybe this, this contract, all of these guys are three percents and these are only two percents? I mean, we need to have the numbers so that we can know what we're looking at for next year. And I know that sometimes some things are very sensitive. Okay, well, eventually, eventually it might be sensitive right at the moment when you're negotiating, but right afterwards, it's not because everybody's, um, income is, is public income. It's all public. So I think that we need to keep track so that we know, oh, we might have this extra, so, okay, that's coming off the, the, um, for next year. So we can plan ahead.
Yeah, I, I think, you know, the collective bargaining, I mean, between the wage study and the collective bargaining, the two brand new unions, what had happened over the course of the past year, God help me, I hope is an anomaly, like, that's not normal, right? And that we're pretty much on track now where the union contracts are lined up to be negotiated at the, at the same time. So it should be much easier to give you the information like as soon as everything's like.
It, it's hard because sometimes, I remember when they first started some of those last year with some of the compensation studies, it started at, okay, I was told that it was gonna be a hundred thousand. Okay, we, and, and so put aside this, keep in your head, we're gonna need a hundred. Okay, now it's a hundred, now it's two fifty. And, and, and we put aside another one eighty for next year, like, so, you know, we need to be more of a part of, I don't, we need to understand what that is and, and what buckets they're going to.
And especially with kind of shaky revenues, depending on what, you know, things are, things are gonna be happening. I, I think to Amy's point, we, we would just like to have at least an understanding of the magnitude of, of where things are, you know, what's expected.
Right.
So that, I think we have a, we have a, a reasonable expectation of where it's gonna end up and, you know, factoring in what we have to do in terms of making the budget work.
And actually, I mean, it's easier in a way now that almost everybody's under collective bargaining because they're going to the step that, that it's been contracted, so we should be able to roll forward that payroll.
You, you, yeah, and you'll have the, you'll have the whole number within the wage lines of the budget that I mentioned, like, you'll see that. And the other thing that we could do, if you're interested in the grainy detail, is, is one of the things that we did negotiate with all of the unions, I can't speak for the schools because we don't have any part of those, is that all of the increases are all now, they all now happen on July one as opposed to some of the unions used to do it on their anniversary date and things like that. So we have to do, uh, what's called a, uh, rate authorization forms for every single employee's listed, their current step, their current rate of pay and what they'd be moving to. So you could, if you really wanted that kind of detail, I don't know why you would, I don't even want it. We can, we can give you those, um, but, you know, again, within the wage line, you'll see FY twenty-six to FY twenty-seven increase and that includes all of the, all of the wage increases for that particular unit. that particular unit.
I think the, the feeling for the, at least for the finance committee and other people I've talked to on, on our committee, is, is that sometimes, that the increases, because we were not really part of it and we were seeing kind of other revenues and budget trends, that maybe there should have been a little bit more pushback on, on some of the increases and the scale of the increases. I think that is what, speaking with, I think, pretty much everybody on the finance committee in the past, that's, that's a concern of ours. Because then, that's, but those are kind of contractual and there's a, there's a sense of obligation to them, right? And now we.
More than a sense.
Yeah, more than a sense, there's an obligation that we have no real input on.
Yeah, I mean, I, I could invite you to any, I could literally pick any negotiation meeting we've had and I'm not sure you'd say that as far as pushback goes.
I, I think, I think you're right.
Any meeting.
I think, as, as they say, you know, it's, it's perception.
I get it, yeah. I mean, certainly the select board can certainly have a discussion.
For those who are in those tables.
See why adding, you know, I, we can certainly have a discussion about, you know, adding a finance committee number to a negotiation team or, or something like that. We have, but you would, you would have to be, the only way that I can see meeting labor law is you would have to be a part of the actual negotiation team. We couldn't report out to you. We wouldn't be able to do that.
We can look into, we can look into how other municipalities.
Yeah.
Right? The other thing is, it's not like going to buy a car, where you say, if they want 10,000, I'll give you eight, and if you don't want it, you walk away. It's not quite that simple.
I've been in radiations before and it's horrible.
It's, 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 it's hard because, you know, as Amy had mentioned, you know, these, these folks over here get 3%, these folks over here get 2%, but, you know, they also paid a little bit extra, we paid a little bit extra to put the air conditioning in the car as opposed to, you know, the, you know what I mean?
I mean, you can buy a car.
So that's, that's part of the issue, is that everybody asks for a little piece of something different and so you have to kind of work around.
What else you got, Amy?
Oh, that's it.
We're gonna have to do, we're gonna have to do a group call, right?
I don't, I don't think we're quite there.
What shall we do, a adjournment for the select board?
Okay.
Motion by David, second by Jane, all those in favor?
Aye. I'll make a motion with the finance committee.
Motion by Paul, second by Peter, all those in favor?
Aye.